Hi Beverly, are you all set?
I am and I'm in recording mode.
Okay, thank you. Adam, I had a few introductory comments. If you'd like, I can start with those.
Please Matthew, proceed.
So is everyone able to see the shared screen I have?
Yes, Matthew.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, well, first of all, I wanted to thank everyone for joining us this evening. I'm sure many of you were with us two weeks ago on April 20th. And as I said at the beginning of that meeting, these are challenging times. We hope everyone out there is staying safe and healthy. This is a special zoning meeting, or excuse me, a special meeting of the zoning board of adjustment. It was scheduled to consider a special exception application that the board took up at their last meeting on April 20th from Avon Rouge Development Group for 115 Old Homestead Highway. The board did vote to continue that application to the special meeting this evening. My name is Matthew Bachler. I am the Director of Planning and Economic Development for the Town of Swansea. In addition to the board members in attendance this evening, I'm joined by Michael Branley, the Town Administrator, and also Michael Courtney, who is Town Council. For those of you who are not in attendance at the meeting on April 20th, we are using a webinar version of the Zoom meeting platform. So you may see on the screen in front of you, there's a list of panelists. So these are made up of the members of the board, our Recording Secretary Beverly Bernard, and Town Staff and Council. And then you'll also see a list of attendees. So attendees are view-only participants who can see and hear everything in terms of the meeting proceedings. And during the public hearing portion of the meeting, those that are attending can be unmuted during the public hearing section to provide comments during that section of the meeting. For the meeting tonight, myself and Michael Branley will be hosting the meeting and calling upon residents to participate during that public hearing portion of the meeting. Just to quickly provide some introductory slides, just so everyone's aware of how the public participation will happen at the meeting. All right, so the Board Chair will notify participants when the public comment period is open. If you're participating online, you will click on the blue hand icon at the bottom of your screen. This will raise your hand so that the moderator knows that you wish to speak. If you're calling in this evening, participating by phone, you would need to press star nine on your keypad. And that will also let the moderator know that you wish to speak. When it's your turn to speak, so when someone raises their hand, you'll get moved to the top of the list of attendees, so we know that you would like to speak. The moderator will unmute you and let you know that you can share your comments at that point. We also have a question and answer feature. And I'm just opening that up now. I see quickly, just, I have a question here from Michael Ryan at 14 Houghton Point. Which I will, Michael, I see your question, and I will get back to you just in a minute here once I'm done with this introductory slide. So just bear with me for one minute. So you can also use the Q and A function to type in a question, and we will be reading these questions aloud, and then we'll respond to those verbally. When you're providing comments, please provide your name and address for the record. Those that are familiar with the Zoom meeting platform, there's also a chat function. We ask that you do not use the chat function. If you have any questions or want to provide any comments, those should be put into the Q and A feature rather than the chat feature. Public comments will be accepted for a specified period of time. The Chair will inform participants when that public comment period is closing. If you have any difficulties accessing the meeting over the course of the meeting, please call the number provided on the screen here. This is my office number, but those calls are being forwarded to my cellphone. You can also email me at the email address provided on the screen. And with that, I'll turn it over to the Chair, Adam Mulhern.
Thank you very much, Matthew. And I'll note that the gentleman, it looks like, who was writing in his question doesn't have a microphone set up, so he couldn't hear what you were saying with respect to that you'll get back to him, so.
Thank you for that.
So just want to make sure you're aware of that. Well, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. We are now going to be conducting the Swansea Zoning Board of Adjustment Special Meeting Agenda for May 4th, 2020. And again, just to dovetail what Matthew stated, due to the COVID-19 state of emergency in pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 and pursuant to Executive Order 2020 2020-04, the Swansea ZBA will be holding this May 4th, 2020 special meeting remotely using this web-based program, Zoom. But you know, board members and applicants will be participating in the meeting remotely. Again, this is not a perfect technology, but we're in an unprecedented time. I really appreciate everyone being patient with us. We'll do our best to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to give testimony, ask questions, and be heard. We'll do our best to make that happen. So just wanted to say that to everybody. We'll get through this together. So to start off our meeting, first, we will call to order. So I believe we have two of our members, board members, who are recusing themselves. And you know, for Mr. Bill Hutwecker, we will be sitting Mr. Bob Mitchell. And for Keith Tebow, we will be seating Eric Calio. Beverly, would you like to call roll call?
Glad to. And Adam Mulhern?
Here, and in my room alone.
Bob Mitchell?
Present, and I'm alone in my office at home.
Eric Calio?
Present, alone in the room.
Brian Rutgers?
Here, and alone in my office.
Ruth Snyder? Anne Karazinski?
Here, and in my office alone.
The agenda for the May 4th Special Meeting of the Zoning Board of Adjustments is as follows. The minutes for April 20th, 2020 will be considered. And then there will be a public hearing, special exception application. Avon Rouge Development Group LTD requests a special exception for multifamily dwellings on property located at 1, I'm sorry, I can't see it all, 115 Old Homestead Highway, pursuant to Section 5, Article B2B of the zoning ordinance. The subject property is shown at Tax Map 37, Lot 7, and is located in the business district. And there may be other discussions or other business as well.
Thank you very much, Beverly. So for the, to start off our agenda, the minutes, did everyone have an opportunity to read the minutes?
Yes.
Would anyone like to make a motion? On accepting the minutes or changing the minutes as needed?
I make a motion to accept the minutes from the April 20th meeting.
We have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to accept the minutes as written. Is there any discussion amongst the board on the motion? No? Hearing none? Move to approve, or I guess, I'm sorry, we will vote on the minutes. Beverly, could you give us a roll?
I would be glad to, yes. Adam?
Yeah.
Bob?
Yes.
Eric Calio?
Yes.
Brian Rutgers?
Yes.
Anne Karazinski?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously by roll call.
Excellent. All right, tonight, we are going to be listening to the-
Mr. Chairman, point of order. We never answered that question on the Q and A about the phone number. Did you want to give out the phone number for people to call in?
Yes, that's a good idea. Matthew, did you have an opportunity to send that out?
I did, so I did respond to Mr. Michael Ryan and provided him with the phone number and the ID number. He responded that that worked for him, so he is now connected by phone.
Okay, and does everyone else have an opportunity via phone? I mean, this has been communicated to everyone via the email and what we put on the town site for both of telephone numbers as well as the address for the meeting itself?
That is, that is correct. So the telephone number provided to Mr. Ryan is the same one that was advertised on the town's website on the agenda for this evening. But certainly, if anyone has any issues during the meeting, in terms of hearing access to the meeting, you can call, you can use the Q and A feature to let me know, or again, send me an email, and we'll work as quickly as we can to try to address any issue that you might have.
Thank you, man.
Just a reminder too, I know this is a new format for all of us, and I'm guilty of it myself, so. Just a reminder to board members, please try to remember to state your name before providing comments, just for the record and for those that are listening by phone, so they know who is speaking. Thank you.
Excellent, Matthew, thank you very much. Adam Mulhern here, trying to start off with it fresh. So last, our last meeting we had, there were some conditions for closing the meeting and rescheduling it for today. And if I recall, Brian, you had made some of those conditions being that testimony could be picked up from where it was left off. Is that accurate? Remember?
You do, yes. From what some of the testimony given to us as a board, Michael and Matthew had made promises to people that they would be heard, and I concur that I agree. Everybody should be given their due time. There were unanswered questions, but the hour was getting late, so I made a proposal that we print those off, save them, and then start this meeting with them, and so I concur.
Okay, thank you, Brian. And the format thus far we have been taking is to take those that are on the phone and have testimony they like to give via the phone. And there's also Q and A questions that we were both had from the previous meeting as well as any ones that are new. And we're going to try to go back and forth as best we can to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to communicate in the way they can. Matthew, do you have the questions available to us that were from the last meeting? Is there a record for us to see what questions there are, open, unanswered? Or are we, how are we going to manage that activity? This is Matthew.
This is Matthew, thank you, Adam. We do have a copy of the unanswered questions from the Q and A feature from the April 20th meeting. Those were provided in the packet to the board. I just wanted to make a note too that we had received several emails ahead of that meeting on April 20th from residents with comments that they wanted to be read aloud if they were not able to participate in the meeting. All of those have been provided to the board as well in the packet for the meeting this evening. So the board knows, and those listening in know, that all those comments have been shared with the board. But for the purpose of this meeting, Adam, I do have the, a copy of those Q and A questions that were still unanswered. And I can put those up on, using share screen for the board, if you want to go through those first.
I think in terms of the questions that were unanswered last week, that probably makes some sense to answer those first, and then we can go again back and forth via audio, you know, people calling in as well as those questions to start off with, that makes a lot of sense. So is there any other discussions that anyone has? Or if not, I would suggest that we open the meeting to the public and make this a public hearing so that testimony can be heard. No, hearing no other questions or business. We will open up this special exception application hearing to the public, and we can start hearing testimony from people who'd like to speak and to be heard. So let's start off, Matthew, with maybe a Q and A question from last week that was unanswered, and we can start there.
And thank you, Adam. So I'm pulling up the copy of the Q and A questions from April 20th. Just want to make sure the board members are able to see these.
Yes.
Okay. So the first one is from Michael Ryan at 14 Houghton Point, which I will read aloud. I know the panelists and the attendees are able to see this, but for those listening on the phone, Mr. Ryan states, "With respect to the criteria of nuisance, there was quite a bit of discussion from the developers stating that traffic would be a minimal impact due to the fact these are senior citizens and would not be driving. I do not agree with that opinion. That opinion that traffic would be as minimal as they are reporting. Even if this were true, there was mention of business in the area that are within walking distance. I live on Houghton Point and have walked across Route 32. It is a highly hazardous road to cross, and I am younger, physically fit. I am a younger, physically fit individual. I would ask that you consider this a nuisance and a hazard." And that's the end of his statement.
Thank you, Matthew. And in the sake of moving things along with respect to our meetings, typically, a question would be asked of the board. The Chairman would then direct the question to the applicant and vice versa. I think in terms of just moving the conversation forward and making sure everyone has enough time to be able to speak, questions like this will be inferred to be asked through me, or the Chairman, to the applicant. And I think Mr. Branley will be opening up that discussion so that the applicant is able to answer any questions or go back and, you know, and discuss. So that being said, Mr. Franks, do you have anything you'd like to respond to on that? I think he's muted. I'm not hearing anything. So Matthew or Michael, are you, are you able to allow Mr. Franks to be able to speak via sharing his screen or giving him access to the?
He is not muted through the app. It's something on his end, whether it's his mic. It's not the app.
Okay, so Mr. Franks, if you can hear what we're saying, that you're muted on your side, I believe. Okay, he's just acknowledged, and he's working on his microphone. And everyone on the call, please be patient with us. We're just making sure that we get all the bugs out here initially with respect to communication. So the applicant, Mr. Franks, looks to be, or appears to be, working to make his microphone able to work so that he can reply to any of the testimony or questions that you guys have. This is Adam Mulhern. According to this, Matthew, it's standing, we are attendees and need to be panelists, need a panelist ID. So they are signed in as a, as an attendee, not a panelist.
I'm going to try making them attendee and a panelist again and see if that helps. But I mean, they are a panelist right now, so I don't know that. It doesn't matter how you were logged in, just like we were letting people talk throughout the hearing before.
Okay. Thank you, Michael Branley.
Mr. Franks, do you have, if you have a microphone, please try unplugging it and replugging it, that might help. Doesn't look like a microphone is plugged in right now. You're only showing camera, it doesn't even show a muted microphone. Another option is to call in through your telephone, and you can stay on the video, and then just use the telephone for audio.
I think we have it, can you hear me now?
I-
Yes.
Yeah, we've been dialing and trying to get in, both on Ted's phone and my phone. Sorry about that, we were reusing the numbers that we had, but it just wasn't letting us in, so. My response to Mr. Ryan on 14 Houghton Point is is that the Department of Transportation has clearly looked at this and has not required a traffic study. Southwest Regional Planning Commission has weighed in on this and has concluded that we would have between 10 and 12, 10 and 12 people leaving the facility during peak hours. So I appreciate the fact that the gentleman lives there and is concerned about the hazardous road crossings. However, DOT and both Southwest Regional Planning Commission have made it clear as to their opinions on this, and this is kind of what they do, so. That's pretty much all that I have to say about that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franks. Matthew, would you like to do another Q and A question? And then let's go to people who would like to participate via the phone.
All right, thanks, Adam. The next comment is one I responded to, but just to read it aloud. Ralph Randall from Kingdom Hall asked where you could obtain the most recent site plan for the building plan. I did follow up with Mr. Randall and provided him with a copy of those plans. So I'll skip forward to the next comment. "If you only need one acre for this project, then build on the one acre and leave the rest green space maybe more aesthetic. I can't imagine how you can fit this on one acre, though." And that's the end of the comment.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Michael. I'm thinking in terms of phrasing it as a question. Mr. Franks, I'll give you the opportunity to respond if you'd like.
Sure. Well, one acre obviously is not very much space. However, because of the requirements for the parking, we need to use the vast majority of space that's given to us, which is allowed in the zone that we're in. So there will be ample vegetation in front, to sides, and the rear of the property that we will have to go through the planning board to satisfy their requirements. And we'll do everything that we're supposed to at the planning board process. We have two and a half acres, and we're working hard to find a balance between the zoning board and the planning board. So it's a fine, fine, fine process that we've got to go through, and we'll make certain that we adhere to the rules that we have to. I don't know what else to say, except that we're going to work hard to make certain that we get everything done that the planning board needs us to do.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Franks. Matthew, in terms of how many questions are left on this, I'm seeing, I can only go as far as the first page. How many further?
So there are a total of two pages. Looks like there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven comments left. I will say, some of those comments provided in the Q and A feature, the residents that provided those comments may have had an opportunity to state those verbally too during the public hearing, and some of the comments are, for example, the final comment is thanking the board for having the meeting go so long and take the time for people to speak, so. I'll leave it up to you. I could just finish going through these, the few comments that we have left from the meeting on April 20th, or we could-
I think in the sake of keeping things chronological, it makes sense to maintain and go through these. So why don't you proceed?
So the next comment, and I just received a comment from Julie Fanning regarding her comment that she was able to speak to this when she was given time to speak at the meeting on April 20th. Her comment is there listed as 6:30, 6:00 PM, which I think it was actually 9:30, 6:00 PM. But so her comment was, she was able to provide that comment during her time to speak. The next comment, Sheila at 6:50 PM states, "I hope that the zoning board will recognize that the developer is essentially ignoring the statements that people who are living in the area are bringing up. A modern hotel-looking building is not in the rural character of the neighborhood. This is not being addressed. The developer is ignoring the reality of the traffic. This is frustrating." And that's the end of the comment provided by Sheila.
Okay. To be honest, I'm not seeing a question necessarily if the applicant can answer directly in that particular comment, but the comment is noted?
Going on to the next comment from Catherine Snow with a comment regarding the impact on Wilson Pond. "I think the concern of impact on the pond is not location near the shoreline protection and drainoff, but the actual increased use of the public access with 76 units of people so nearby." I remember this is a comment that came up during the public hearing on April 20th as well.
Protection, okay. Mr. Franks, would you like to respond to that particular comment as it relates to shoreline protection and drainoff? I know it was brought up in the testimony back and forth last meeting, but I'd like to respond to it with the opportunity.
Sure. The building said it's well outside of the shoreline protection zone. As stated earlier, the slope is away from Wilson Pond, so all- As stated earlier, the slope is away from Wilson Pond, so all the drainage and runoff, water doesn't run uphill, so it'll be running down to the basin area that we've provided in the plans for the ZBA to look at. And again, will be heavily scrutinized, I'm sure, by the planning board. So, you know, as far as other folks visiting the pond, I mean, I can't really speak to that because I don't know who that could potentially live at the facility, might like to walk over and look at the pond. I don't, that, yeah, I don't know the answer to that. But I do know there's a, a public beach area that people can, that can frequent. I was there a few days ago with my son fishing. We had a great afternoon. It was sunny and we enjoyed ourselves. So I know it's just not for the people that live in the immediate areas. For everybody to use, it's a public waterway. As far as, you know, the shoreline protection area, we, we have that all covered. We, we've researched that. Our civil engineer has specifically looked at that. And we've covered everything that we need to from our end. And again, I'm certain that it'll be brought up by the planning board and discussed there. And we have all the data that we, we need to present to the planning board to ensure that all the rules and regulations are followed appropriately.
Thank you, Mr. Franks. Matthew?
Moving on to the next comment. The comment states, this, this does not meet the third criteria. It will reduce home values. It will be an eyesore to local residents. I don't live near there, but can understand. I would not want this four stories is too tall next to residents.
I believe the comment would, would have to do with reducing home values. And that is something that has been, testimony has been given by both, both the applicant as well as some of the butters. Mr. Frank, would you like to respond? As it relates to home values and whole reduction of that, potential reduction.
I certainly appreciate everybody's concern that their property values are going to be impacted. We presented and submitted an appraisal from a certified appraiser that is local to the area, that understands the area very well. And specifically stated that home values will not be impacted. I'd also refer the concerned individuals to the Southwest Regional Planning Commission. They, work that's been done in the region that shows more information about this specifically. Historically, homes have not been impacted. In fact, a newer, modern facility is, is more likely than not going to improve the values of their homes. So I understand that, you know, people are concerned about this. We've done our best to give the board and everyone involved the correct information and appraisals that support our position on this. And I hope that they take the time to read through it and understand that this is not going to impact the value of their homes in a negative fashion. Thank you.
Okay. It appears there are two more questions to the Q and A, and then we'll open it up to people on, on the phone.
The next comment for the zoning board, I hope that you will hear the pleas of the people living in the area that just because a developer has met the criteria and his opinion, it does not make the project something that fits the ethos of the neighborhood. Please hear what we are saying about the safety of Route 32 and that we will be stuck living with this huge and unattractive building. And it will impact the value of our homes and land in the neighborhood.
Thank you, Matthew. Mr. Franks, would you like to respond to that?
Sure. I just refer back to the appraisal. I appreciate it if folks will take a little time that are concerned about this and do a little research on it. You know, as part of our application with the ZBA, as part of our applications for, you know, the planning board, we, we have to go through these steps in order to ensure that, you know, we've met the guidelines. And we did. We, we have an appraisal and an opinion. And it clearly states that homes will not be impacted. So I appreciate everybody's concern and I hear it clearly. You know, if I were in the same shoes, I would, I would be concerned. But professionals have been hired to do the civil engineering. Professionals have been hired to do the architectural. Professionals have been hired to do the appraisals. And we have opinions that are from folks that are specifically in those areas for those reasons. And they've offered opinions and offered their information to the ZBA where they'll offer their opinions to, to the, to the planning board as well. And I hope folks take the time to read some of the opinions that have been shared. Because we obviously want to make certain that we've got all of our bases covered and we feel that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Franks. Matthew, would you like to ask the last, or respond to the last comment?
Sorry, I just muted myself. The last comment from the Q and A from April 20th is from Catherine Snow stating, no need to answer this, but it doesn't, it doesn't seem appropriate that the applicant is to keep amending his proposal based upon knowledge he gains from our questions. If he presents yet another change, it seems that he, I'm, I'm sorry, I'll start again. If he presents yet another change, it seems that we should all be notified immediately so that we may also have the opportunity to respond to it.
And I think this is, this is Adam Muller. And again, the, the, the style of the meeting structure that we have is really based on toolset that we have available to us. And in a typical meeting, if we were all together, the applicant would have the ability to respond to any question that was presented in a, in a physical meeting. So again, the limitations, there are limitations to the Zoom format. But I think in terms of trying to get everyone's opportunity to ask and answer any of the questions that they can or desire to have asked, I think we're doing the best possible, you know, by everybody. So in terms of the format, no, again, it's not perfect. But we are, we are doing the, the very best to get everybody's comments heard. So that being said, why don't we open up to people who'd like to participate via the phone? Matthew?
Okay. That's, I think that's my cue, right, Matthew?
That's right. Thank you, Michael.
And you want to remind people again, Matthew, before we start that, how people would indicate that they want to speak, whether they're on the phone or on their computer?
Yeah, thanks, Michael. Do that here. May just bear with me for one, one minute here. So just to remind folks the public participation guidelines here. So if you're participating online, you'll see it's either at the bottom of your screen or at the top of the screen. There's a blue hand icon. And if you press that, that will raise your hand so that Michael knows that you wish to speak. If you're participating by phone and you wish to speak, please press star nine on your keypad. That will also let Michael know. When it's your turn, Michael will unmute you and let you know that you can share your comments. And we will be calling on people in the order that they've either raised their hands or pressed star nine on the keypad. Again, please provide your name and address for the recording secretary when speaking or typing in a question. I think that, that covers it. I did want to just take this opportunity quickly just to mention, you know, we have received emails from residents between the meeting on April 20th and the meeting this evening. Those emails have been provided to the board. We did receive some additional emails over the course of today. And those were also sent to the board by email late this afternoon. So emails from Mary Werner, Lillian and Michael Chirichella, Jeanette Groom and Julie Fanning were provided to the board this afternoon. I did receive two emails from residents who asked me to read their comments aloud. If they're not able to access the meeting tonight for technical reasons, similar to the meeting the other week, I'll hold those comments until the end so they have an opportunity to speak for themselves. If they're not able to speak, then I will read those comments aloud. So with that, I would ask Michael to call upon the first person who has raised their hand.
Just one, one quick thing. This is Adam Muller. Did everyone at the, the board have an opportunity to read the emails that were sent in? As additions? Okay.
Yes, this is Ann Kursinski. Yes, I did. Thank you.
Okay, first we will go to Sheila Heffernan. Sheila, you are unmuted. Please go ahead.
Hi, this may not sound like Sheila. I'm her husband, Bill. This was reused on her laptop. I'm Bill Hatendorf at Seven Pitcher Point. Let me start by saying thank you to the board for doing the very best you can under frustrating circumstances that we've been operating under. We appreciate having the chance to be heard, even if it's not in the community setting that's normally part of our small town life. Since our last meeting, I guess I've been struck with a, a new appreciation for just what that apartment building might bring to our neighborhood here. A group of us neighbors who live across the street got together in our, on our own little Zoom conference about how to look at this whole thing. And, and we got together Saturday, a week ago, between the two meetings at the proposed site with the architect's drawing of the building and the schematics of how it was all laid out.
Do you want to ask them to show the presentation?
Not yet. Call us crazy, but we thought maybe if we got some helium filled balloons on a nice calm day with a cord on each, the length of the building's height, we could let them go up from the four corners to get a better sense of things. And maybe, Michael, you've got those pictures?
I, I have them now. I'm going to pull them up here quickly. So to make sure, is the board able to see the picture on the screen in front of you?
Yes.
There's not all that much to show. Even on a relatively calm afternoon, the balloons wanted to drift sideways. At the one story or even two story mark, they seemed to go pretty straight up. But when you add the third or fourth floors worth of cord, they just kind of wanted to drift away, anything but being vertical. So we, since, since we couldn't make the corners work, we took the balloons closer to the neighboring houses and trees to see how that looked. Would you want to, you can go ahead and advance another slide. And this is all standing out in front of the property. Maybe one more. So we were trying to get across the street. Just, just as we were trying to get across the street, there were literally dozens of cars and trucks going in both directions on Route 32. It just, considering that this has been talked about as an unvisi street, it was kind of funny the way we were overwhelmed. When we did get across, we were struck, I think, by, even with the breeze, how tall those four stories of balloon cord seemed against the rest of the neighborhood. I'm talking, in talking with our balloon adventure to a, a friend who grew up in Winchester, but knows our neighborhood well, he offered to create a 3D drawing to see what this building would look like in relationship to the neighborhood. So we shared the architect's plans and drawing, and he coordinated that with Google Street View Dimensions and a design program he uses to come up with some images to show the perspective. You want to get maybe the next slide? This is, that sort of, if you're standing right across the street from it, that would be the, the general view in small form. My wife and I have walked around and driven up and down the streets. And again, here to see how this little project with its, all its aspects tucks in with the rural nature of our neighborhood, the atmosphere, the ambiance, things that strongly attracted us to moving here some years ago. I think you can get a pretty good sense of how it tucks in. Maybe we go to the next image. There you go. See how it tucks in with the neighborhood and is in relationship to the other buildings. It's really pretty jarring. It's, you know, looking at the list of four conditions on which the board judges its approval. Condition A asks if it's an appropriate location for the proposed use. I believe that this is in no way an appropriate location at all. The building is way too big for the width of the property, is very out of scale for the area, for the neighborhood. It significantly reduces the green space in the area, trading, trading all that green for almost all building and pavement. Condition C asks if there would be a nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles and pedestrians. Now, I'm not with the DOT, but as someone who knows and walks and drives this, this area all the time, as a qualified pedestrian and driver of a vehicle that travels in the immediate neighborhood, I believe this project would add a serious and, a serious hazard and nuisance. Then back to condition C on the list, whether, excuse me, B on the list, whether approval by the board would, one, reduce the value of the property within the district or otherwise be two, injurious, three, obnoxious, or four, offensive to the neighborhood. Item one, property value. I believe with all my heart that our home would be reduced in value. Taxes might not go down, but if I were looking to buy in the area, I think I would not be willing to pay as much for a property with that big box building across the street. Item two, injurious to the neighborhood. Just out of curiosity, looked up the words injurious is defined as detrimental or causing or likely to cause damage or harm. In my opinion, this project would inevitably bring more people, more vehicles, more noise, more air pollution, more vehicle traffic on the roads, more pedestrians and trash along the narrow shoulders of our roads. And so this project would certainly be injurious to the quality of life to those of us residing nearby. Item three says obnoxious, which means extremely unpleasant, disagreeable, distasteful. To those of us in the neighborhood, this project really is all of those obnoxious things. Item four says offensive, which defines as causing someone to feel deeply hurt, upset or angry. I'm sure those of you on the board must have a pretty good idea at this point from the crowds at the first two aborted meetings, from those of us who have written in and those who have joined or tried to join these Zoom meetings, just how offensive this project is to us locals. It would be hard to miss how deeply all of us feel hurt, upset, angry at the whole idea of this offensive project. Such a big box, and I use that term in all the senses, big box monstrosity would profoundly change the character of our mostly single family North Swansea neighborhood. How do I really feel about the project? To fully express my deep feelings, I have to use an Old Testament word, if you don't mind. It's an abomination. We love the rural character of our North Swansea neighborhood. We love its single family nature. This is where we want to live out our lives. Please do the right thing and vote no to this abomination. Thanks very much for your consideration.
Thank you for that, Mr. Hatendorf. Do we have any response or answers from the applicant?
And quickly, there's one more slide in the presentation that I was just going to, I didn't have a chance to show that. So just wanted to show all the images provided. So that's the final, final slide in that presentation.
Are you ready for me to speak or Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please go ahead.
Yeah. I certainly appreciate the amount of time and effort that was put into this drawing. We have no way, obviously, of verifying any of the heights and the layouts there. I do know that the tree line that separates Joe was witnessing our property has trees well over, well over 40 feet. Trees across the street, the pines are, you know, 60, 60 plus feet. This building will be set back from the highway, 115 to 120 feet back. It's, it's quite, it's quite a way back. So the height obviously is, is allowed in this area of town. The zoning ordinance specifically allows 45 feet and we are under that. You know, we could build a four story warehouse there. Or we could build a four story. hotel there, and we wouldn't need to come for a special exception. So it's a permitted use. That we wouldn't even, we wouldn't even be here talking if, if, if we wanted to build a hotel there, for example. It's gonna look very similar to this. I'd li- I'd like to point out that in the master plan, the overall impression of these 45 square miles may be rural, but included herein are the village business districts of West Swansea and North Swansea, and feel it is reasonable to use the municipal infrastructure that's already in place there and, and channel for future high density residential and commercial projects to those neighborhoods. The business districts are designed specifically for higher density or commercial use. And this project meets that. It's got power, it's got the water, it's got the sewer. And again, you know, we meet the setbacks. We meet the green space criteria. We meet the height limitations. We meet the glide slope. We've met everything there. And, you know, to answer a question or statement that was made a little earlier, you know, about size and scope of the project, we started out at 99. We reduced it by 25%. We did that so that the project was smaller, was more palatable. So we have taken into consideration what folks were concerned about. 99 down to 76 is a, is a, is a much smaller project by, by 25%. I certainly hear what folks are saying, and I certainly have taken everything into consideration that they have. But this height of this building is permitted in this zone, and it's a zone that's designed specifically for higher density. We keep going back to, and, and I appreciate the folks that are concerned about the traffic. I've gone out there and spent quite a bit of time out there, and I've, I've seen the traffic out there. And DOT and Southwest Regional Planning Commission have both written in on this and, and offered what they know to be true. And again, they're, they're in this business. So we have to rely on their data, the professionals, and that's exactly what we've done. So I appreciate the work that's been put into this from these folks that are across the street that are, you know, concerned about this. But it's gonna be 120 feet back from the highway. And again, it's well within, well within the zoning board requirements. So I hope the zoning boards, you know, takes that into consideration when making their decision. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Frank.
I understand either Mr. Hattenberg or Hatendorf or Ms. Heffernan that might have a follow-up question. So I'm gonna unmute you. Go ahead. Go ahead, Sheila Heffernan or Bill Hatendorf?
Yes, we're here. Thanks.
With the plant, the, all of the, we just would like to verify the, the name of this person, please.
I'm sorry, Sheila Heffernan, and I live-
Thank you.
Hit your point. The, I just want to make it clear that the drawings were done by the, from the, the plans that you gave us, so that the, you were questioning the veracity of them. And I'd like to say that it's done specifically by the plans that you submitted. So that's exactly what we used in terms of the height of the property. And I contend that the Department of Transportation report that you keep going back to, I'd like to question whether they've really spent the time that is needed to understand the traffic that is happening there on a regular basis. And I think you'll hear later from people about the fact that your contention that there would only be 10 or 12 drivers at, you know, a specific time is not something that recognizes that people who are age 66, 67, 68, 69 are still working people.
Thank you, Ms. Heffernan. Do we want to move on to the next question, or go back to the applicant?
I don't, I have no further comments. I, I would encourage the folks to read the information that's been provided by DOT, by Southwest Regional Planning Commission as to the traffic counts there that need, 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 need to have been done, and they have been done. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Next up, we have Rachel. Rachel, please state your name and address. Rachel, you should be unmuted.
Hi, this is Bruno Koschleff at 138 Old Homestead. I'm using Rachel's computer. I hope that's allowed.
Absolutely. Can you spell your last name, please?
K O S H E L E F F. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Backler for his letter to me of last week. And I responded to him today. I delivered my response, but, which was, which contained other information, really my views. He knows why I haven't been able to participate in prior meetings. So I took the liberty of, on the basis that I might not be able to get on tonight, to state in writing my views. And with the permission of the board, I would like to read a short por- portion of my letter, which covers several of the topics that have already been mentioned. But for the record, if you allow, I would then read them.
Your opportunity to, sir, your opportunity to say what you'd like.
Thank you. I'm going to read a portion of the letter that I sent to Mr. Backler this afternoon. Quote, "Basically, I find the sheer size of the proposed structure to be totally out of sync with the neighborhood, which is composed almost exclusively of private homes of no more than two stories. Any sort of three or worse still, four-story structure, i.e. of the size proposed by Avonru, would adversely affect the neighborhood, and as well, I fear, the values of the local private homes, mine included. Further, the effect of such a large structure is bound to be injurious to the general, quote, peaceful enjoyment, unquote, of the neighborhood citizens by reasons of substantial increase of motor vehicle traffic, the sheer ugliness of the structure, the structures, and the all-night light pollution that would perforce be installed, parentheses, entranceway, pavement, parking." Allow me to expand on two of these points. First, the sheer size of the structure violates the good sense of balance that urban suburban developers and planners are trained to strive for. For the average citizen, it's difficult, probably impossible, to generate a valid notion of the actual structure's size without a visual reference to the surroundings. Currently, the proposed site is but an open field, a wide expanse. The two-dimensional plans and site sketches slash maps cannot provide as large picture sense of the proposal. To further satisfy myself on these matters, I sought out a somewhat comparable four-story structure from which to get a greater appreciation of the developer's building structure. I draw your attention to the four-story apartment building recently constructed across from the pub restaurant in Keene, New Hampshire. When I visited the location, I couldn't find anyone from whom to obtain the building footprint size, but I did pace off the exterior dimensions. While this structure, by the rough calculations, is smaller than the proposed Avonru building, the fact that Keene's structure is a four-story building clearly provides a good sense of the imposition four stories command over the neighborhood. And this is in the middle of a city. A comparable structure as that proposed by Avonru in the North Swansea predominantly single-family dwelling neighborhood is, to me, an outlandish design and frankly, an egregious idea. It simply doesn't fit. I have another point, quote, "My other point in this vein is in reference to the expected increase in motor vehicle traffic such development would entail. I was told this matter was discussed at an earlier meeting to which I was not participant. Further, I was told that a somewhat cavalier dismissal of, quote, 'old people don't drive,'" turning to page three, "was voiced. While I am rea- ready to defer the question to any sort of scientific survey conducted by a recognized authority, say the State of New Hampshire Traffic and Licensing Authorities, allow me comment on the matter. I myself, in two weeks short of my 78th birthday, quote, parentheses, 'being over 75 makes me a so-called super senior,' end quote. I drive out of my place on Old Homestead Highway, Route 32, on average from three to five times a day. Also, as an active member of the Keene Senior Center, parentheses, visiting the facility almost every day," and, and close parentheses, "I can attest that nearly everyone visiting the location drives their own vehicles. Nowadays, people in their 90s, absent a physical condition, dementia or Parkinson's, are very much in the habit of driving everywhere. I urge the board to reject, to reject the Avonru proposal as being inappropriate to the setting. I thank the board for its consideration on complex issues at hand," end quote. I would like to just add one comment, if I may. I've never met Mr. Frank. I appreciate his position, of course, and why he is saying many of the things he has to. It's, it's very considered, and in many ways, I would agree, it's balanced as a proposal. I, I did notice that he mentioned in the same sentence, the word appraisal and opinion, when he said that professionals have been hired to do the appraisal. And I would just like to underscore that appraisers actually use a lot of their opinions. You can shop for appraisers. You can, you can shop for different manners of appraising a business, the share value of, of cash flow, for instance. There's a lot of opinion in this. I'm not saying that his appraiser necessarily went out of the norms of, of his profession, but there are many ways to interpret some of this. Thank you very much. I appreciate your comments and appreciate the work that you've done on this. And that's my testimony.
Thank you, sir. We'll turn it over to the applicant for his response to those questions and comments.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and happy birthday in two weeks to you, Mr. Bruno. Certainly appreciate you making the time to come on and the time that you took to write those letters. Like to say that, you know, DOT regularly measures traffic on state roads, including, including Route 32. So I know the traffic is a big concern for, for folks. And with regard to the mills on Ralston Street in Keene, I'd like to say that, I mean, that's, that's, that's right on the sidewalk. That's, that's not 120 feet back from a highway. That sits right on the sidewalk. It's, it's in the seed district. And it's a completely different scenario here where we have adequate parking setback. There'll be ample vegetation that will be in, in, installed there. And the building will meet the requirements of not only the CBA for this special exception, but everything that the planning board will need us to do as well. So careful consideration for all of that, you know, will be taken in, in the, in the, into, uh, consideration when this is all done. And I know that there's a lot for people to digest here. So I just appreciate everybody, you know, with their questions that they're, that they're certainly asking. But I'd like to say that the master plan subcommittee, and this is off the master plan, I'd like to just read a little bit here, that the overall impression of the 45 square miles may be, in quotes, rural, but included herein are the village business districts. And we're in the business district here of West Swansea, North Swansea. The master plan subcommittee does not seek to turn the clock back on these densely settled and relatively industrialized districts to uphold an arbitrary definition. Rather, we feel it reasonable to capitalize on the municipal infrastructure already in place to channel future high-density residential and commercial projects to those neighborhoods while preserving as much of the feasible and slopes and ridgelines, riverbanks fields around the rest of Swansea. We recommend that the zoning provisions conform to this conceptual tem- template. We're, we're, we picked a spot that is in a business zone that has multiple of the businesses going on in the area. It has the power, the water, the sewer that we need, the infrastructure that the master plan calls out. We're very careful in picking a location that met the criteria of the master plan. And it says specifically that it is for higher density. And that's what we, we've done here. I, I know that there's, you know, concerns, but again, I'd like to just point out that, you know, we've met the criteria. And we picked a spot that we feel meets that criteria very clearly. And I appreciate Mr. Bruno taking the time again to, to come out and express himself. Thank you. And I'll turn it back over to the chair. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, sir. We have two more people currently with their hands up. So we're going to take them, and then we're gonna go to Q and A questions. So next up, we have Jolie Fanning. Jolie, you should be unmuted. I think we both clicked it. Go ahead, Jolie.
Yes. So it's Jolie Fanning, Two Pitcher Point, North Swansea. And I have a couple of things that I want to bring up. On the last call, the petition with over 300 Swansea residents was dismissed out of hand by Avonru. I contend that it is valid, as it speaks to question number one, is this an appropriate location for such use? Everyone that signed the petition stated that this is not the place for this facility. They think of Swansea as a community and that we are all neighbors, whether they are in this small neighborhood or not. They feel that it is not the place for this building to be added. So I do ask the board that they consider this when making the decision. My second point is in response to Mr. Frank's comment on the last call, where he talks about two to eight-year waiting lists for affordable housing. And I don't know if that's senior affordable housing or just affordable housing. But I do have data specifically for senior housing locally that gives a very different picture of the situation. I have provided you with a copy of the Sentinel dated May 2nd and 3rd, where there are three senior facilities advertising opening. The Southwestern Community Services, which has two of those facilities, has been comparable to what Mr. Frank's is proposing. And then, on a personal note, my brother-in-law applied for senior housing two months ago and moved in two weeks ago. That's the fourth facility. And virtually no waiting list for any of them. Another statement by Mr. Frank's, which is in the application, it's his final statement, that says, "Provide Swansea seniors with an immediate housing solution which does not currently exist. I contend, the data that I'm sharing with you shows that senior housing exists in the region and is available for residents without a prolonged wait." The next thing I want to talk about is transportation. One of the comments, I don't know if it's from the notes of last time or not, but it said, "These folks don't drive." So AAA has a report on elderly drivers. It's a 2015 report, so it's relatively new compared to some of the data that Avonru has supplied us with. The key takeaway note on that for future researchers and practitioners is recognizing that this new generation of aging drivers, largely the baby boomers, are healthy and maintaining their driving. So these folks drive less doesn't compute when you look at some data that is specifically done on elderly drivers. And then the last one is public safety. In the information from Avonru, they talk about ambulance usage, and they downplay how much the elderly use ambulance. So I got some data from a local town in New Hampshire, Wilton, New Hampshire. It's for Q1 2020. It indicates that people 60-plus represent 42% of total ambulance calls. So it is a significantly higher number than what was quoted by Avonru. And it is, I believe, more pertinent to this issue because we're talking about 62-plus, and the data that was submitted by Avonru talks about 55-plus data. So there's, it's skewed to a younger audience. The last thing that I want to talk about is, Mr. Frank's has mentioned a couple of times that we need to read what he has submitted and pay attention to the data that he has- and pay attention to the data that he has submitted. I would like to offer that I did read the information. I did pay attention to what was written. I did give my view last time that it's very outdated. It's relative to cities, et cetera, when we're talking about property values. And I did want to say the same thing that Bruno said, that Mr. Frank says it's an opinion that his appraiser offered. So it's our opinion that we're offering that the data doesn't speak to this particular piece of property in this neighborhood. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fanning. Mr. Frank, would you like to respond to any of those comments?
Yeah, there were quite a few. I'm going to try to remember them all. I'm trying to find the piece that was sent here from earlier. And I think I just found it. And the attorney can speak, or counsel can speak to the petition that has been sent in. The two-year to eight-year waiting list was work that I had done with my team here locally. There may be, you know, an advertisement in a newspaper for a unit. The vast majority of senior facilities in the region have a two- to an eight-year waiting list. That's all been done and verified. I would direct her to New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority's website and to Southwest Regional Planning Commission's website for the overwhelming need for affordable housing and senior housing in our region. Cheshire County has a less than 1% vacancy rate. So the idea that we don't need housing is certainly not supportive. We do need housing, and we needed that a very big clip. By some estimates, New Hampshire needs 25,000 units to even get moderately caught up. So there may be an ad in the newspaper. We're in some pretty strange times now, generally speaking. I can't answer the question of that as to even whether or not it was for an affordable housing senior complex that is similar to this in nature, which would currently exist here. I'm trying to read through the AA report that I guess was cited. Again, you know, I refer her back to DOT and to Southwest Regional Planning Commission that has this data that they've put into the area. And take a hard look at that. If DOT had the authority in our area, that's a state road, they're going to be the ones that are going to dictate whether or not there needs to be any studies done. And they're saying that they don't, along with Southwest Regional Planning Commission that has the national and regional data there as well. We did have an appraisal done by a professional and with years of experience in the area. And I think, again, back from my earlier statement where, you know, a lot of folks have opinions, and they're certainly entitled to them. But when you have professional engineers, professional architects, and professionals that do studies, they do them based on the information that's available to them. I didn't call the guy up and say, "Hey, I need you to put this in there." It's not the way it works. They look at the data, they look at the trends, they pull the information, and they formulate their opinion based on the information that they've reviewed. That's what we did. It was an unbiased approach to this process. And there'll be market studies that are going to be needed for the State Housing Agency as well. We don't have any input on any of that. They take from the data that is given to them and that they research, and they come up with the facts. And that's what we've done here. Hope that answers most of your questions.
I think Jolie has a quick follow-up. Jolie, I'm going to unmute you again briefly.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. All right. So I just wanted to have one quick comment about the opinion of the appraiser and based on the info that he reviewed, I think is the words that Mr. Frank's is using. And I do just want to remind the board to think about that data that was submitted as not being from a rural community and not being up to date. I did speak to an appraiser locally, and they did say that markets change over time and that the Monadnock Region market is very different, and it doesn't peg to even the rest of New Hampshire. So to have data that is from Boston and Portland and wherever else far afield of here is really not to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Jolie. And did we want to ask the town council briefly, Mr. Chair, about that petition and the legality there or the effect of that?
Yes, Mr. Fanning, I think that would be helpful.
Attorney Courtney, please go ahead.
Well, that is attorney-client privilege, so I'm just going to state basically that, you know, it's one piece of evidence. We don't do zoning by majority vote. You just look at the criteria. Obviously, the testimony about specific details of maybe parking or pedestrians and such should be considered. But a petition of 300 names, I'm not sure, gets you to a specific point. So I don't think that petition should be, you know, a material thing the board should consider. But it is some evidence. But again, democracy does not control here. It's whether they've met the factors.
Thank you for that clarification. And so we have one more person that had their hand up before. Then we have a follow-up, so we'll see if we have time for that after we go back to the Q and A. But we're going to go with Jeanette here next. Please state your name and address. Go ahead, Jeanette.
My name's Jeanette Groom at Six Pitcher Point. And I just wanted, last time, at our last meeting, I spoke to the Master Plan and shared several excerpts from it. And before I present what I'm going to present this evening, I just wanted to reread one of those excerpts, which was "Recommendations for Future Land Use." And it said, "Continue to direct low-density residential development to occur along the town's Class V roads and to discourage new residential development in the existing commercial, industrial, and business zoning districts." So I just wanted to remind the board about that. That was in print. So this evening, I was going to just address those four questions that need to be met in a slightly different way. And in what I had emailed to Matthew this morning, many of the words are carefully selected by the town in those four questions. And they do not simply address technical requirements that the developer must meet. In other words, meeting their criteria. The words that are in those four questions speak to the values of the townspeople and the impact that any special exception would have on the neighborhood, the community, the town, the residents, and the town's future. So some of these words go much deeper than just the physical requirements that they can meet. I think they address more of the spirit and the character of the neighborhood and of the town. So in question number one, and I'm not going to go through these in detail as I had in my email, as Bill had already addressed some of these. But question number one addresses whether it's an appropriate location. So something appropriate is, is it suitable? So you've heard from several residents that we, you know, I can speak for myself, as well as maybe some other people, that we feel that it is not an appropriate project or complex or development for this neighborhood. The four-story height alone does not conform to any heights anywhere nearby, thus being unsuitable. It also runs width-wise across the lot, thus blocking a much larger view of the hills and the open space beyond. So question number two addresses the words injurious, obnoxious, and offensive. So those are words that really speak to the spirit and the value of the town. They don't speak to the size, you know, the specific technical things. So the design is injurious. It's almost all concrete and pavement, buildings, driveways, parking lots, minimal green space, and no concept of rural value at all, thus causing harm to the environment. The intent is injurious to the human spirit. There's no effort to blend into the aesthetics of the neighborhood, as other people have mentioned. And it's also injurious to the town. This large-scale complex does not contribute to the preservation of Swansea's rural character. The town has worked hard to develop and maintain this atmosphere. This complex sends the wrong urban message and would be injurious to the town's reputation. Then we have the word obnoxious, which Bill had explained means extremely unpleasant. So we believe, I believe, it would be extremely unpleasant. The current residents would have to live with it on a daily basis, looking at it, driving past it, having this large and tall obstruction in place of what used to be an open view and relaxing space. And looking at the word offensive, causing someone to feel deeply hurt, upset, and angry. So it's already done those things to many people. Just the idea of such a complex creates upset and anger among many town residents. To think that town officials would even really consider this, it creates a deep hurt. The height is offensive. The block design is offensive. The fact that they're trying to cram a very large complex into a very small lot is also offensive. So question number three, talking about things being a nuisance, which can be described as an inconvenience or annoyance. Well, I think it would be extremely inconvenient to pedestrians. There are not many options to walk for people who would be living there. There's no place for the residents to safely walk. So within the complex itself are just roads, parking lots, and buildings. Very little green space. And then this forces them to look for options outside of the complex, which is really not safe along Route 32. Then in question number three, there's the word hazard. Several people have talked about the risk to pedestrians, walking along Route 32, having to cross over 32. So that's a concern. Also a concern, the use of Wilson Pond. How are they going to get there? They're going to walk. There's no place to walk. They're going to drive. There's no place to park when you get there. So that is another concern. Also, between Lake Street and Wilson Pond, there are so many different curb cuts that adding two more curb cuts in a very small couple-block area is also going to increase risk. So in summary, I have a couple of excerpts to read. One of them is from the town's brochure that I happened to pick up at Town Hall from the Open Space Committee. And the very first paragraph says, "During the 1990s, Swansea grew nearly twice as fast in population and in new housing units as Cheshire County as a whole. While we have been doing our part to meet the region's housing needs, we have been paying less attention to preserving Swansea's rural character. Compared to the six towns surrounding Swansea, we have the lowest percentage of protected land." And my next excerpt is from the article that Avenue supplied in their initial packet. It's from New Hampshire Realtor Magazine, the winter 2020 issue. And this is an article that they supplied about housing. The very last paragraph I found quite interesting. "Solutions need to arise locally," NHAR President Dan O'Halloran says. "At the end of the day, I think this boils down to individual town decisions and how open they are to affordable housing developments," he says. "Federal incentives for towns that create more housing options is an interesting one, but the solution ultimately has to come from state and local leaders." "Housing really does define your community's identity, how we live and interact with our neighbors." I think that has a very strong statement, and I hope that the zoning board understands the strength of that statement. So I want to close by saying, "In my training and years of experience as a judge of a competitive sport, one of our guiding principles has always been, quote, 'What you choose to reward will be perpetuated.' Is this a direction we really want the town to go in? So I urge the zoning board of adjustment to decline Avenue's request for a special exception. Please uphold our town values and maintain our rural, not urban, character." Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Groom. Any comments, or they weren't really questioned so much, but any response from the applicant?
Sure. I'd certainly like to simply express my appreciation for her comments and reemphasize that the project meets the zoning requirements and the zoning ordinance. Town has already approved, you know, multiple large apartment complexes in the area as well. And to the last comment about where she spoke of the article that we submitted, the intent of that statement, solutions to happen locally. Solutions has to come from the state and local agencies. I agree with that completely. The problem that we face across this state is everybody's not in my backyard. We don't want it. We don't want senior housing. We don't want those people. Those people are our friends. Those people are our neighbors. I went through this in a wall fall. It was heartbreaking to be beat up, chastised at the local stores and town. Only now, thanks by the grace of God, that we've got the buildings done. For those same townspeople that called me names and beat me up verbally on Saturday mornings when I go get a coffee, say, "Hey, thanks for putting up with us." We need housing in this state. I don't take what anyone has said here lightly. I appreciate it. I earnestly do. I genuinely appreciate it. But there are folks out there that need help. They need affordable housing. These are seniors that live in our community and live around the region. I know of a person who sold a home in Swansea who is now in a two-bedroom apartment for $1,650 a month because she can't find affordable housing, worked hard her whole life, paying $1,650 a month for an apartment with no heat. She's going to pay her heat, too, when she could live here for around $1,000 with heat included. So the intent of that article was clear, and it has to happen locally. It has to happen in townships and municipalities across the state, where they take the "not in my backyard" mentality and they set it to the side, and they have an earnest discussion about the real needs of real people. It's one of the things that I dislike the most about this business is just knowing that there are so many people out there that need help and working diligently to try to bring them the help and support that they need. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Ms. Groom has put up her hand, so I'm going to unmute her briefly. We're trying to limit the back and forth, but just a quick unmute for Ms. Groom. Please go ahead briefly.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I really take offense to those comments because I certainly... Yes, I really take offense to those comments because I certainly, and I think many of us, are not opposed to housing. We're not opposed to seniors. We're not opposed to people and helping them. So I really take offense to the fact that you think that's what we think, that that's what we're about. We're a neighborhood. We're not about that. But what's offensive also is the scale to which you think you can build on that lot. Why 76 apartments? Why not 30, 20? Why 76 and four stories? It totally does not fit this town and this community. We are certainly welcome to people and to helping people. So I definitely take offense to the fact that you think otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Groom. Okay, Matthew, I think we're going to now turn it over to some of the Q and A questions. Do we want to do a time check? It's about 8:30. I don't know if the board is planned kind of scheduling how long the public hearing's going to go on, or maybe I'm throwing a monkey in the wrench, but just throwing that out there if you want to discuss timing at all.
I think we should try to get through, this is Adam Mulhern, as much of the testimony as possible and discussion and so forth. So let's go ahead and proceed with the Q and A questions.
Thank you, Adam. I do see we have one other attendee with a raised hand who had spoken previously. So just so you know, we see that you have your hand raised. We will get to, we're getting to, going over to the Q and A comments that have been provided since the beginning of the meeting. So turning to those now, and I believe all the panelists are able to see those, but I will be reading them aloud. The first three comments are all provided by the same individual. It's three questions, so I'm going to pose the three questions, and then we can provide a response to those. So the first question is, will the property manager be on site and if so, live in one of the units? The second question, please explain the tax credit. Has the town of Swansea negotiated real estate credits? And the third question, has the town considered doing their own studies as opposed to relying on ones done by the builder? So I think the first one is certainly for the applicant, will the property manager be on site and if so, will they live in one of the units?
It's unlikely that the property manager will live in one of the units, but there will be a property manager there on a regular and consistent basis. As I stated earlier, it'll be a secure building with the appropriate OB system or key entry to get in. It'll be cambered so that there will be an additional layer of security there. But it's unlikely that there will be anyone living there, but I don't know that that could possibly be the case. But I can't say that would be for sure at this point. Most likely not.
And the second question, please explain the tax credit. Has the town of Swansea negotiated real estate credits? So just in response to the second part of that question, the town is not in any way involved with real estate credits or anything like that in terms of this application. So Mr. Franks, if you're able to respond to the first question, just about the tax credits involved in the project?
The tax credit process is through the federal government through HUD. There are two different taxes, tax credits that are generally used, 4% with a bond for projects that are generally over 40 units, and then there are the 9% tax credits that are generally used for under 40 units. This would be a 4% bond deal through public and private partnership. I have equity investors that would invest the money to build the facility, would be coupled with a state municipal bond. I will be investing a substantial amount of my own money into the project. I may or may not have stated that in Walpole and the two developments that we have there, Phase 1 and Phase 2 of Abenaki Springs, I personally invested 3/4 of a million dollars and expect to invest at least that much here. Unlike a lot of others who, that are in this business, I like to put my money where my mouth is, because I believe in the projects. So I will be heavily vested in this project as I have been in others in the past, and I will be involved in the day-to-day operations of this project. As I stated earlier, we have a professional management company that will be managing this property, and we go the extra lengths to ensure that everything is done above and beyond what would be considered the norm. I hope that answers the question for you.
Thank you, Mr. Franks. Matthew, do you want to have us respond to the two other questions? I think you already responded to one. We're not involved at the city, or the town of Swansea is not involved whatsoever with real estate tax credits. And then the second question as well, do we have to consider doing our own studies as opposed to relying ones done by the builder?
Yeah, Adam, would you like me to respond?
Yes. Could you please respond to that?
Sure. So this is Matthew responding to the question, has the town considered doing their own studies as opposed to relying on ones done by the builder? So I would say it's at the discretion of, you know, both for the zoning board and the planning board, if the boards feel as if they need to hire a third party to have studies done for a proposal to better understand what's being proposed, that is at the discretion of both the zoning board and in the planning, for the planning board too, and the site plan review process. So that is something that's available to the boards.
And would you like to continue? This is again Adam Mulhern, continue with the Q and A questions.
Yes, thanks, Adam. The next one is a comment from Anne Heffernan stating that was not the question. I believe this may have been in response to a previous discussion that was held earlier on in the meeting. So Ms. Heffernan, if I'm not representing that correctly, please feel free to type in a comment, and we'll try to better respond to that comment. The next comment from Anne Heffernan, the appraisal referred places out of state and then urban areas, as well as being from several years ago. This was a comment provided by others as well this evening. From Sheila Heffernan, please let Mr. Franks know that we have read all the material, including the traffic reports from the NHDOT. But just in response to a comment made by Mr. Franks encouraging residents to read those The next from Jolie Fanning, I would like to offer my follow-up comments when he is done. I believe we have the opportunity to give Ms. Fanning an opportunity to respond to Mr. Franks' comments. A comment about the appraisal, so I think we were able to respond to that comment. And again, this information was from out of state and none of it was local. This is referring to the appraisal report again. A comment regarding the appraisal, a study that you pay for can be done in any way that you like. Again, I think this is referring to the appraisal study. And Adam, let me know if I'm going through these two quickly, or if you want to stop and discuss any of them.
Okay, Matthew, I will.
The next comment from Anne Heffernan, so if we think it is a nuisance, the petition does not support this. I believe we answered the question about kind of the role this type of petition plays in this application. Let's see. Regarding the need for affordable housing in Cheshire County, I'm sorry, this is from Jolie Fanning. Regarding the need for affordable housing in Cheshire County, I believe you have data from Nancy stating that Swansea has done our part with having a higher percentage of affordable housing, much higher percentage compared and compared to Keene. So that was information that was provided to the zoning board in your packet for this evening. That information together on what Swansea provides in terms of affordable housing as compared to Keene. So that information, just in response to Ms. Fanning's comment, that information was included in your packet for this evening, so the board does have that information.
Thank you, Matthew.
Comment from Anne Heffernan, we are not anti-seniors. Most of us are seniors, and this is simply not appropriate. Comment from Jolie Fanning, we have lots of senior housing in Swansea. This is not at all what he is positioning it as. We welcome seniors in our town, but this is not the spot for it. Remember, four senior facilities have openings for renting apartments. He is talking about one poor woman who, for some reason, did not go to Southwest Community Services where they would have been accommodated. I don't know if you want.
For some of the questions, and just for the purposes, everybody's in the call who may not be able to see the screen, some of the comments are not posed as questions, so we're just doing our best to make sure that everything is read and all the communication is public and able to be seen and heard by everybody. So in terms of, we're doing our best to make sure that the questions do get answered when posed.
Thanks, Adam. The next comment from Michael Ryan, 14 Houghton Point. It was mentioned that Avon Rouge Development in Walpole was first proposed and approved to be a 62-plus age restriction. After a period of time, they were unable to fill the occupancy and requested the age restriction to be lowered to 55 plus. I would like to relate a similar story I have personally experienced. I guess in response to that comment, Mr. Ryan, if you would, if you're still, if you're still in the meeting on phone or by computer, if you want to provide, if you want to provide a comment about that experience, if you can raise your hand. I think, Michael, I think Mr. Ryan has raised his hand.
The 860 phone number? Oh, no.
Yeah.
Matt, this is Bob Mitchell. I think Ryan addressed that about two comments down. He does convey his story.
Thank you, Bob. I will read that aloud here. But jumping ahead, a comment provided by Mr. Ryan, "I grew up on a dead-end road with two houses and a wooded two-acre lot at the end. In the late 1970s, a developer came in and built a senior housing project for 62-plus. There were 40 units total in the facility. Years later, the facility fell into bankruptcy, and the town purchased the facility at taxpayer expense. They lowered the age restriction. Later, it was purchased by the state and became a halfway home. Crime increased and the values of all the homes plummeted. There were assurances to the board back in the 70s that this would never occur." It continues, this is Michael Ryan continuing, "Lastly, I would like to point out that every person, with the exception of Avon Rouge, has been against. Not one voice of support. Please consider this as you vote on this proposal. There is no town support for this project."
Thank you, Matthew. I don't know if there's something specific that the applicant needs to address or could address specifically to the comments, but it is heard by the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These projects are monitored and monitored very closely by New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority. Of the tens of thousands of units that they have across the state, to my understanding, they've not had one foreclosure. They are heavily monitored. There is a substantial amount of reserves that are put aside at the closing so that if there ever was or is an issue that is dealt with very quickly. There are inspections twice a year. They spend an inordinate amount of time making certain that these projects adhere to all the HUD guidelines, all of the rules, and there's a word known that is called Alora, which means that when the project is built and is approved, that it has to stay this type of housing for a certain number of years. It used to be 99 years, but I think it's been reduced to about 50 at this point before there's any discussion that it's not going to be a 62 and over project. So I certainly don't know about his experiences with what could have transpired at another facility, but I'm absolutely certain that it wasn't in the state of New Hampshire, because New Hampshire Housing hasn't had any that have ended default and been foreclosed on. So they work very diligently to make sure that these projects are monitored heavily. And I understand that, you know, we don't have a lot of folks from town, as you stated, you know, speaking in favor of this, but Swansea's got 7,300 people. I'm sure they've all heard about the project. We've got, you know, a handful of folks here that are certainly concerned that are here, and we're doing our best to answer for the 80 to 100 folks that have sent in and folks that have signed the petition. But there are 7,300 folks here in Swansea, and, you know, we're doing our best to try to get all the information to everybody that is participating. So that's all I have to say, I guess, at this point on that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And Matthew, there's a, it looks like two open questions in the Q and A. Would you like to continue to read with those?
Yes, I'll finish those out here. The next comment is from Jolie Fanning. Can he speak to the amount he is going to get from the Southwest Planning Community? It looks like between Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the Walpole development is almost $850,000. So I believe that's a question for Mr. Franks, if you're able to respond to that.
Yeah, certainly. The two projects that were in Walpole, New Hampshire, were approximately $5 million at a piece. The vast majority of money that came in from those development projects was from our equity investors, Hunt Companies out of Texas. In this last project, Hunt Companies came to the table with roughly $4.3 million of cash to purchase the tax credits, and we have a $386,000 first mortgage on that property, and I personally put in around $325,000. So the 325, the 380 runs out to around $700,000. I got $4.3 million in private money for those tax credits that were purchased, and that rounded out Phase 2 of Abenaki Springs. Phase 1 was similar in nature. The vast majority of money that comes to the table in these projects are outside investors. So outside investors are investing into new community developments in towns that need them, and they have an opportunity to invest, buying these tax credits for their companies. They're called, and they use the banks by them, they're called CRAs, which are Community Reinvestment Acts, and that's how generally this money is raised. The federal government generally doesn't bring too much money to the table, if any. It's generally through a private partnership with investors that want to invest into the communities that need housing, affordable housing, and senior housing, where the vast majority of money comes to the table. Mr. Chairman?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Brian.
Ryan Rogers, so it's getting on five minutes to nine, which is when we normally close our meetings. At this point, I'd like to propose that we have basically one point, I'd like to propose that we have basically one Q and A left on the board and no hands raised. I make a motion that we continue on.
Is there a second?
Reevaluating at 9:30.
This is Bob Mitchell. I'll second that.
I would like to add one thing, that at nine o'clock, we take a five-minute evacuation of whatever's required. We didn't do that last time. We've all been sipping coffee and, and trying to keep here. So a quick five-minute break, a recess at, at nine o'clock. So Beverly, could you call it quickly?
Yes. Can you hear me? Am I, am I muted?
I can hear you.
Okay, good. Adam O'Hearn?
Yes.
Bob Mitchell?
Yes.
Eric Calio?
Yes.
Brian Rutgers?
Yes.
Ann Karazinski?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes by roll call.
Thank you, Beverly.
We have one remaining comment in the Q and A from Barbara Sheehan, 21 Waters Edge Road. She, Ms. Sheehan asks, "Do they receive FAA approval for this project?" The applicant has not. I'll let the applicant respond to that, that question, actually.
Okay, Matthew.
Mr. Chairman, to, as of yet, we have not filed the appropriate paperwork for that. We wanted to wait until we were complete with the ZBA application so that we could move forward with that along with the appropriate paperwork for the planning board. So we have not yet done that. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just a quick note for the board. I know this was a, something we discussed at our last meeting. It would be appropriate for the board to place that as a condition of approval, that the applicant received FAA approval for the project. It's at the discretion of the board, but that could be a condition.
Thank you, Matthew. And we had one more raised hand?
At this time, I'm not seeing any additional raised hands. Okay.
I'll make a motion that we take that five-minute break now, then, Mr. Chairman?
Second, Bob Mitchell.
All right, roll call.
One second, please. Adam O'Hearn?
Yes.
Bob Mitchell?
Yes.
Eric Calio?
Yes.
Brian Rutgers?
Yes.
Ann Karazinski?
Yes.
The motion passes by, by, all in favor by roll call.
All right, let's take a five-minute break and we will come right back and continue our discussion.
Ruth, can you hear me? Ruth Snyder?
Yes, I can hear you.
Can you please tell me what time you joined the meeting?
I've been here since the beginning.
I called your name at the roll and you did not respond.
I responded, but it didn't go through.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
At one point, she was a panelist and then somehow she became an attendee again. So then we made her a panelist again. So I think she's been here the whole time.
Okay.
Yeah, she has been here the whole time.
All right. It looks like it's 9:05. Do we have everybody back? All our members here? It would appear so. All right. All right, being that it's 9:05, we shall reopen the public meeting. And here we are. So Matthew, are there any additional? I can't see whether there's any more questions. Are there any additional questions that have come up in the Q and A section or hands raised?
Yes, Adam, there are two additional comments in the Q and A feature. At this point, I do not see any raised hands. So I will go ahead and respond to the two comments in the Q and A. The first is from Jolie Fanning, stating, "Sorry to keep adding to my comments, but I think it is important to note that the number of people attending this meeting is much higher than any other of this type. I have heard this from the ZBA on the previous call. It is offensive that Mr. Franks is discounting that we are only 100 people."
So, Mr. Franks, I'll give you the opportunity. There wasn't really a question per se, but I'll give you the opportunity to respond if you'd like.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make it clear that I'm not discounting that there are only 100 people here. We've taken very seriously the questions that have been asked and the comments and statements that have been made. I'm referring directly to Mr. Ryan stating that there were quite a few folks that were, you know, against the project, but no one here in support. And so I was only trying to point out that of the 7,300 people in, in the community, there are 100 folks that have legitimate concerns and, and, and great questions. And I've made some great statements, but there are 7,200 that aren't concerned by it, or they would be here having a discussion. So I think that's the only thing I was trying to make was that, you know, there are 100 folks here and we're trying our very best to let them know that we're working diligently to answer all their questions and that we're going to do a great job on this project. But Mr. Ryan had stated that there were no, nobody that's in favor of the project. And I just wanted to, I guess, make that point. That's all. I'm not discounting by any measure what, what was stated by, by fire. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Franks.
So the, the next comment, and this is a comment from Anne Heffernan. So if, if we think it is a nuisance, the petition does not support this. I guess Michael Courtney, Attorney Courtney, had responded to the question, a question earlier about the validity of the petition that was submitted. I'm not sure, Michael, if you want to field that question?
Yeah, so what I was saying is, just because more people in town don't want this, we don't really consider the numbers. We consider what the evidence says. So that's why when people present petitions of several hundred, it really doesn't get to the criteria and the evidences before you. It's some evidence, but it's, it's not material. And it really should just look at the specific evidence on the criteria, what you've been hearing tonight and what you heard last time.
Thank you. The next comment from Jeanette Groom, "I believe it was said at the last meeting that the 62-plus age restriction and the FAA approval was required for the zoning board approval. Please clarify. Thank you." So just in response to the, the second part of that with the FAA approval, so this project would require approval from the FAA. And that's regardless of whether or not it would require zoning board approval for this type of project. But it would be appropriate for the zoning board to, if the zoning board were to vote to approve the application, it would be appropriate for them to place that as a condition. They're conditionally approving a contingent on receiving that FAA approval for the development. It's, it's also at the discretion of the, of the board. The project has been presented as 62-plus age restricted development. And it would also be at the discretion of the board if that is a condition, if the application were to be approved. That's something that the board could, could place as a condition on the project. So those are both options for the board as part of a condition of approval.
Can I just jump in there? The, the planning board could also make those conditions if the border, the zoning board is to approve this and it goes to the planning board. Planning board is usually where you have a lot of conditions. So that's another option is to have the planning board, you know, work with the language for 62 age restriction and the FAA approval.
Okay, thank you.
And then a final comment from Jolie Fanning. Just adding to the, the number of people that are, are interested and have expressed a concern about the project. She states, "Plus the 300 who signed the petition, they are also interested in the project," as noted.
Okay. Thank you very much, Matthew. Now, last is, is any of the further questions or comments that anyone has in the call? And then in addition, if any of the board members specifically have any questions, I know we've been kind of waiting till, you know, everyone else had a response or a time to respond or to comment. But if someone has a question specifically from the board, you know, this is an opportunity as well to, to ask Adam O'Hearn again. Sorry, I'll try to say that first.
Well, so this is Brian Rogers. So I'll, I'll chime in. It looks like we're winding down here and getting to the point where we can close off the public hearing. So I wanted to make a couple of comments so the public can at least hear from, well, at least what my position is on a couple of things. One is, we didn't make anything a condition yet because while we're in open and public session, we can't condition anything until we go to vote. And then, and then at that point, it's a closed meeting to the public. And at that point, that's when the zoning board makes conditions or not. So even though it may have been suggested at our last meeting, until the zoning board makes a vote on it, it's, there are no conditions. I live adjacent to this neighborhood. My opinions are that unfortunately Route 10, 12, and 32 are not owned by the town of Swansea. Actually, the town of Swansea has nothing to do with them in any way, shape, or form. They're state roads. They're owned by the state of New Hampshire and the State Department of Transportation. I feel the pain for the residents in this area. We have no sidewalks in this area. That's unfortunate. That's nothing. I mean, I'm sure we'll get them by the year 3029 because that's about when we'll get them there. But they're needed. They're desperately needed. And they've been needed for a long, long, long time. And maybe somebody will actually do something about it at some point, long after I'm gone. But that is a problem with Route 32. That's been a longstanding problem with 32. It's not so much the same problem on Route 10. This is my opinion. Because Route 10 mostly is businesses and they're usually, as a rule of thumb, further off the road. So Route 10 is a little wider, a little more business oriented. Route 12 has sidewalks, thanks to Keene, all the way up to the Swansea Town Line. Swansea added a little stretch there, but for the most part, Route 12 is also, you know, more business oriented once you get beyond North Swansea. And, but Route 10 is unique. I mean, 32 is unique. It's a residential street, even though it's a highway running through a residential area. That's all residential through there. You got a business here, business there. But for the most part, that's a residential area with no sidewalks. I get it. I live in this area and it's, it's unfortunate, but that's just the way it is. They will need to get FAA approval. That's not even a condition that we would have to make. We should make it to make sure that it is part of the record, but that, that land is in the glide slope. So per federal regulations, they do have to get permission from the FAA. And the only question I have for the developer is, I don't think I've heard anybody ask it yet, is the house that's existing, the current one that's right there now, is that going to be torn down?
Yes, the, the house will be, will be removed from the site.
Okay.
Make way, to make way for the, for the new, for the new building.
Okay. Thank you. So I think I said it at our last meeting. I think the chairman also repeated it. I believe Matthew also reset it. I'm going to say it again because sometimes the salient points get missed, you know, when there's a lot of emotion. You know, when there's a lot of emotion involved and there's a lot of emotion from the callers. I have not seen a case in all the years I've been on this board where there's been this many people involved, but this many hours of testimony given on one topic. Mr. Mitchell might be remembering something beyond my time, but this is this is pretty involved. That said, to repeat and add nausea, we don't get in this board, we don't get the choice of saying, oh, we like it, we don't like it, we, you know, want this, we want that, we want trees, we want it. That's nothing to do with this board. The only case this board has in front of it is answering two questions to a special exception, and that's it. That's the complete. And that's entirely where our jurisdiction stops. Although a lot of the points I think the taxpayers have brought up are fantastic points and all germane and probably more germane to the Planning Board than the zoning board. But that's that's where I'll end my public comment at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Any other members of the boards have any questions or comments?
I have a question. Eric Calio here, assessor of the developer. I know this was brought up at the last, I believe this was brought up at the last meeting, but the color of the building, can you just go over again what that's going to look like? I know you had shown us a rendition. But I just, I just wanted to understand what what how that color of that building was going to blend in to the area.
Thank you very much for the question. We have more likely than not going to lean on the Planning Board and make adjustments to what we feel would be appropriate and ask for some guidance there. We want something that is going to be aesthetically pleasing. It would be neutral in color. The project and wall pole is white and red to go with the rural character of the community and the barn, the barn look. But here in Swansea, we would lend heavily on the Planning Board to give us some guidance with regard to that. But I could see a combination of, you know, neutral green, possibly some tan, a white come to mind. But we would, again, lend heavily to the Planning Board and see what it is that they would like to advise us on as to what they felt would be the appropriate appropriate color scheme. I hope that answers your question, but it would be neutral and neutral and neutral as neutral as possible.
Okay. Yeah, I get it. Thank you.
This is Ann Karasinski. I have one question for the developer. In the in the notes from our last meeting, someone had asked the question about the the fire department having 20-foot lanes on the north and the south side. And in that, in that meeting, you said you'd gotten approval for the for the south side being only 16 feet. Is that, is that correct? Because the documentation I read in the in the packet from interim fire inspector was that the there had to be two-way vehicular traffic on both of those lanes.
Correct. Thank you very much for the question. We did meet with the fire, the fire chief, and we had a discussion with him about the fire lanes and we had a discussion with him about the location of the fire hydrants. And for the north side of the project where we have a 20-foot lane on the backside 16, it runs parallel with Aviation Way, which is another 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 road there. And we took heavily into consideration what what they wanted. I'm very pro pro law enforcement and pro fire department. So I want to provide them with the access points and everything that they need to do their job. So we will more likely than not go back to them to ensure that we have covered all of our bases. But he was happy with what we had presented and happy with what we had given him at this point and will lend heavily to their direction and advice for the Planning Board portion of this that will come up to ensure that we have everything that they need in place and where they want it.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And Matthew, do we have any further testimony from the fire department with respect to this this question? Anything further that they've added or?
I do not. I do not have anything in writing from them. I did speak to, at that time, the interim fire chief, Eric Mattson, and he did corroborate what Mr. Franks was saying. He was okay with the 20-foot lane on the north side and the 16-foot lane on the south side. I would echo what Mr. Frank said that with a site plan review application going to the Planning Board, we would heavily involve the fire department and the review of that application. And we'll be looking much, much more closely at the layout of the site itself and looking at those travel lanes in further detail to make sure that they are meeting the fire department needs. So certainly that's something we would work on further at the Planning Board stage.
Thank you, Matthew. And again, this is Adam Mulhern. Ruth Snyder, I know in in past, we haven't had really a discussion because we haven't been able to meet in in normal settings. But typically, as a alternate, you know, member, we always encourage discussion and so forth or questions, even when not seated, with respect to anything you'd like to to ask and so forth. So we encourage discussion, we encourage comment and so forth. Understanding that ultimately, the board members that are seated would be voting, but I just want to make sure that that's communicated to you, Ruth.
It certainly is communicated and any questions that I had have been answered.
Can you repeat her? I cannot hear her at all.
I will type it into chat.
I believe she said that that has been communicated to her and any questions that she has had have been answered.
That's what I heard as well.
That is correct.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I think we have one hand raised and one more question for Matthew to answer. And then at that point, I propose that we close out the public hearing portion of this and move on.
I would, I would agree.
So quickly, I'll, if it's okay, I'll respond to the comment in the Q and A from Julie Fanning addressed to me. Matthew, did you have something from Mary that needed to be read into the record? So Mary Werner of Two Houghton Point provided me with additional comments this afternoon. Those were emailed to the zoning board along with a few other emails. So you should have all received that. Do you, did all the members receive that supplemental information I emailed out this afternoon?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And the the letter from Mary Werner, it does state that, I'm sorry, I'm just scrolling down here. And I will share the screen here. So she does state in that letter that she is hoping to, hoping by communicating with you via email that she will not take up valuable time on the May 4th meeting by reading aloud my thoughts put forth. So I did take that to mean that she she just wanted, wanted me to provide that written comment to the board and that has been provided to the board and the board is at an opportunity to see and read those comments provided by Ms. Werner. So I was not intending to read her full letter aloud. It is part of the official record and being provided to the board. So unless the board would like me to read aloud, that was my, that was my intention.
I believe, I won't speak for everybody here, but I've read it and has everyone else reviewed?
I've read it. I don't think it needs to be read aloud.
Okay. I would agree. So going for this one more hand raised? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. I'm working on getting them able to speak. So it is Rachel, who may or may not be Rachel. Please go ahead.
Yeah, this is Bruno Koshliff again. Thanks very much. This is in reference to Attorney Courtney's comment that democracy doesn't factor with response with regard to the 300 or so petitions. I'd just like to bring forth something from history. I worked with John McCain in 2000 during his, the nomination process. He didn't make it. George Bush got the nomination and then he went on to win. In the first year that George Bush was in office, he was petitioned by the people of Puerto Rico to end the US Navy's use of a certain part of Puerto Rico for aerial and surface bombing and live fire. And he came back and he said, yep, we're going to let, we're going to make the Navy go elsewhere. They're going to stop using that part of Puerto Rico for live fire, which they had been doing since World War II. And even though that this incident didn't come up in his autobiography called Decision Point, I remember very well watching his news conference where he was asked specifically, why did he make this decision? And he said very simply, the people didn't want us there. That's a direct quote, which I have to this day remembered. Well, you have an executive function, in this case, somewhat similar to the president. And I would just leave to you that with all the reasons that we've given you, the people here really don't want this development. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. All right. It doesn't appear that this is Adam Mulhern. It doesn't appear that there's any further questions or comments. We appreciate everyone's, you know, bearing with us through this technology and through what we're dealing with. But I do feel, I feel that everyone has an opportunity to to express what they'd like to express. So that being said, if there's no further questions, we will be closing the public side of the meeting.
Chairman, just one quick kind of point of order, just to get it on the record. Matthew, you've had information available for people to contact you if they're unable to get into the meeting. Is that correct?
All right, Michael, that is correct. So yeah, at the beginning, beginning of the meeting, I did share that information. If anyone was having issues with accessing the meeting, that's also, that was also provided on the town's website. And with the posting of the agenda.
And you did not hear from anyone who said they were unable to get in?
No, other than, I know Mr. Ryan had some issues at the beginning of the meeting, but we were able to to get him connected. And other than that, I have not, for this meeting, I have not received any, any issues.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thought it was maybe important to clarify that or get that on the record.
Okay. So the public side of this discussion has has ended and
Mr. Franks might have one comment.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, my attorney counsel has a summation. Would that be here in the public session or would that be after the public session is closed? I just wanted to make certain that we were able to have an opportunity for him to speak.
Yeah, so it would be, it would be here. What the public side of the meeting has been closed, so that once we close the the meeting, sessions would only happen amongst the board members. If you have additional information you'd like to present, now would be the time.
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'll turn it over to attorney JP Harris.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. Again, my name is James Harris. I go by JP. I'm from Sheehan Finney. And it's my privilege to represent the applicant. On behalf of the applicant and Mr. Franks and Mr. Sampson who's here, we just want to thank the board for its consideration and for navigating your way through this new participatory process. I want to make a few general summary comments and then I'm going to address the four criteria that you'll be asked to consider. What I'd like for you all to do is to imagine that a developer intended to build a four-story hotel on this, with the exact same footprint on this parcel, same setback, same height, same driveway locations, same general appearance. Those who lived across the street or drove by would see a building looking almost identical to the one being presented to you. Now, that project would go forward to site plan without a hearing, just like the one we've, we've gone through for the last couple of nights. That project moves ahead. The opposition to this project, I don't think, has explained why that project proceeds, but this one should not. I'd like for you to imagine a warehouse or a retail structure of the same height, same general footprint. That project goes forward without a hearing, just like the one you've gone through for the last couple of nights. That project moved ahead. In retrospect, some of the opposition expressed that this project constitutes really a criticism of the zoning ordinance and the fact that this parcel is zoned for the business district. Those that wish that the building be set back further, for example, are really critiquing the setback for this particular district. Those that wish that the building were shorter in height are really critiquing the the ordinance with respect to the height. This project meets all of the criteria. It does not need a variance, which we've said several times. And I submit to you that the opposition to this project is really speaking to the fact that this parcel is zoned for business use. And and that displeases some. Some of the opposition is focused on aspects of the product that are really outside the four specific criteria that you'll, you'll undertake in the ordinance. Asking the board to deny a special exception because the building is, in their view, unsightly from a design perspective, attempts to inject a criterion that is subjective as opposed to objective. And you have to ask yourself, what standard would this board really be applying to this project and future ones if the aesthetic appeal was really a criterion? Town council addressed twice the the notion of the petition and I won't repeat that. I just said that you have a much more straightforward task than trying to figure out at what point, at what level of participation from the, from the town is satisfactory or unsatisfactory. If there were 200 people on the petition, would that change the analysis? The answer is no. You have very, you have four very specific elements to consider tonight. And we believe the applicant has met that criterion. There's been a lot of discussion about traffic. And the question is not whether this project will add any amount of traffic. Any business structure built on this parcel will add to the traffic on that road. But the question is whether this affordable housing project will add so much more traffic than a warehouse or a hotel or retail space or nursing home or any of the other permitted uses that this project is too dangerous to be allowed to proceed. And I submit to you, the opposition has not submitted sufficient evidence to that point. A warehouse working several shifts will have significant impact on the traffic area in this area, but that project goes forward without a hearing, just like the one you've encountered. Some of the opponents reference the master plan and the desire to preserve the rural character of the town. And I would say that the zoning ordinance control, it is a reflection of the master plan. Having a business district is not inconsistent with the overall goal of preserving the rural character of the town. The voters of this town decided long ago to allow for some business development in certain locations in this rural town, and this is one of those locations. Mr. Franks read to you the portion of page five of your master plan. It says the overall impression of these 45 square miles may be rural, but included herein are the village business districts of West Swansea and North Swansea. We feel it reasonable to capitalize on the municipal infrastructure already in place to channel future high-density residential and commercial projects to these neighborhoods. Ms. Groom tonight addressed portions of the master plan that that she read to her means that you should discourage residential development. And I submit to you that that's not what this was intended to mean. This business district was intended to discourage single-family residential development. But what read in context with page five, the portion I just read to you, high-density residential is in fact consistent with your rural nature and this particular parcel. This project is also consistent with the master plan's stated goal of providing diverse housing and fulfilling regional housing needs. So I ask that you remember that when you consider in particular the criterion of whether this is appropriate for this location. So I'll now turn to the four elements that you'll be asked to consider when this closes. The first is whether the proposed use is similar to one or more of the uses The first is whether the proposed use is similar to one or more of the uses already authorized in the district and is an appropriate location for such use. We've gone through the list of specific uses. The ordinance does not forclose other uses. It's not an exhaustive list. That's why you are being asked to consider whether it's similar to those that are permitted. And in fact, the record shows that this, that the applicant's proposed use is less offensive and less taxing than other uses that are also permitted. With respect to the appropriate location, there've been really two objections that I've seen, appearance and traffic, which I touched on and I won't reiterate again. But I'll just respectfully ask that if you determine that this project is not appropriate for this location, that you articulate on the record how this project is different from the hotel or other uses that are permitted on the site. The second criteria is whether such approval would not reduce the value of any property within the district, nor otherwise be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood. We pointed to you several times the opinion of Mr. Weaver. He's a professional. He put his name on this report. He put his license on this report. And I respectfully submit that there's no countering report in this record. There's plenty of anecdotal feeling and opinion from those who live in the town, which we respect. But in weighing the evidence in this record, you weigh the professional's opinion against the anecdotal. His opinion is that there is a significant market, that there is a high-quality product to be built here, and that will not cause a negative impact on, on the property value. There was some discussion tonight about what it means to be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive. And I submit to you that those are legal terms. It does not mean subjective or an emotional response, or whether it's pleasant. But injurious, obnoxious, and offensive asks you to consider whether there are odors or omission or other hazards that might emanate from this site that are much more tangible than whether they cause an unpleasant feeling with those who drive by. The third criteria is whether there'll be a nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. And again, tonight, there was some discussion about the meaning of the term nuisance. Again, it's a legal concept. It's whether it causes harm and not whether it causes some mere inconvenience. The New Hampshire Department of Transportation, as we've said several times, and you'll find at page 49 in your packet, has analyzed this and saw no problem. And I submit to you that there'll be less traffic than other permitted uses. The fire chief and police chief have also weighed in. The only objective data I would submit to you with respect to traffic has been submitted by the applicant in this case. The fourth criteria is whether there are adequate and appropriate facilities to be provided for the proper operation. I, I don't believe that there was very much discussion about this. I'll just reiterate that there's public and water, public water and sewer. There was a little discussion tonight about the management company, and we opened the prior meeting with more detail about what the management company's role will be. But I submit that none of the opposition really questioned or challenged this. So to allow you to get to your, your task, I'll conclude and just ask that you approve, approve this special permit application that the, that you find that the applicant has met the four stated criteria. And thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
And Adam, if I may, just to, I, I know the board previously voted to extend the meeting time to nine 30, and we're now past nine 30. So that's one point I wanted to make. And then I, I do, I do have one, one raised hand amongst the attendees, too.
Let's take on the first of the two responses or two, two questions. Does anyone have a problem with us continuing on, pressing on to the, to extend this a bit further? Does anyone have a problem with that?
I support we continue.
We need to make a motion, I believe, to continue. We've made the motion to end the meeting at nine 30. So a motion-
I make a motion to continue this meeting.
I second Eric's.
All right, motion's been seconded to continue the meeting till 10 o'clock.
Why don't we say we should probably, because I think we're at nine 40. Do you want to say nine 40 and then reassess?
I, I don't know that I can handle 10 30.
10 15?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm done at 10. I can't go beyond that.
I, I won't be thinking straight, and I won't record well. I mean-
There you go.
May I suggest, Eric, for your motion that you, that we stop the public hearing at nine 45? And then, because, you know, we can do the point counterpoint for the next 75 days. But I mean, at some point, we have to cut the meeting off and say, we've heard all the opinions and, and at this point, enough is enough.
All right. I'll make a motion that we end the public hearing session at nine 45 and continue the meeting to 10 o'clock PM.
Anyone have a second to that?
Bob Mitchell will second that.
All right, motion's been made to continue the meeting till 10 and continue the public hearing until nine 45. Do we have a roll call for that?
I'll take the roll call. This is public hearing till 45 and meet till 10, right? Adam Mulhern?
Yes.
Bob Mitchell?
Yes.
Eric Calio?
Yes.
Brian Rutgers?
Yes.
Ann Karazinski?
Yes.
The motion passes. All were in favor by roll call.
Thank you, Beverly. So there's, Matthew, you have one hand raised. It looks like a one Julie Fanning. Is that accurate?
That's right. So is it okay to go ahead and-
I'll preface that, you know, a lot of testimony on both sides has been, has been discussed. There's been a lot of points. So please try to keep it to new information. We have, we have heard the opinions of, of, of everyone, and we're, and we respect those opinions. So that's the, the preface.
Thank you, Adam.
Go ahead, Ms. Fanning.
I'm going to be very quick, and I'm just speaking to what Avram Rube spoke to. The hotel has nothing to do with this. There isn't market interest. That's why we haven't spoken to that. We are not criticizing the zoning board. Any business use there is okay because we know that is already approved. We just want to question the data relative to the criteria. A bit about the traffic, it really is our concern for the residents that would be living there and their safety on the road. We do have a large percentage of housing in Swansea. It has to play with opinion, whether it's offensive or not. And that's what I wanted to say. I just wanted the opportunity to answer some of the things that he brought up. So I thank you very much, and I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Bob Mitchell, I move to close the public meeting.
Second that, Brian Rutgers.
All right, motion's been made to close earlier. So do we, let's have a roll call on that.
Who seconded the meeting? I mean, the closure? Who seconded the closure? Thank you.
That to close the public hearing or the public meeting?
Hearing.
Hearing.
Okay. Okay, I've got it. Adam Mulhern?
Yes.
Bob Mitchell?
Yes.
Eric Calio?
Yes.
Brian Rutgers?
Yes.
Ann Karazinski?
Yes.
The motion passes. All in favor by roll call.
Okay. All right, members of the board, we've heard quite a bit of information from both sides, from the applicant, from the butters, and from testimony, both written, spoken, and, and otherwise. Does anyone have any comments in general that they'd like to discuss through this?
So this is Brian, and, and I hope, Mr. Chairman, that you'll have Matthew or Michael. I forget who did it because it was so many hours ago, the beginning of our last meeting on this topic. Explain the difference between a permit and a special exception or- So if we could do that one more time for the people at some point here that are still listening on, that, you know, that would be germane to these people to understand what, really what we're voting. And we're able to answer two questions with four points, and that's it. Whether we take into, you know, you know, there's a lot of comments about basically summarizing and, you know, this is a democratic society. We don't want it here. The NIMBY, I get it. I wouldn't want it at the end of my street either. But that's not what we're voting on. We don't have the power to say that I don't want it in my street. That's, that's another board. But I think from me and my vantage point, the, the biggest issue that I'm, I'm struggling with right now is the safety. Route 32 is a, is a, is a bad road. It's a bad road through there. It's been bad for many, many, many years. We've done nothing about it. I say we, not the town. It's not the town's road, but so that's where I'm struggling.
And to your, and to your point, this is Adam Mulhern, to your point about going over the exception for the versus a variance in brief, a quick summary of that might be helpful, again, just so everyone understands what we're up against with respect to the board's decision. Matthew, would you be so kind as to do a quick summary of that, just for the benefit of everyone on the line who's, you know, who's spent so much time with us?
Certainly. Thanks, Adam. So as has been mentioned, you know, in zoning districts, you have uses that are permitted. So those are permitted as of right. As has been mentioned, in the business district, a hotel, for example, or retail use is permitted as of right, which does not require any review by the zoning board. The town zoning ordinance includes special exception uses. So these are uses that are allowed in a district but require an additional level of review by the zoning board. And your zoning ordinance lays out the criteria that need to be reviewed in considering whether or not to approve a special exception. And those are the four criteria that have been, been reviewed. The proposed use is similar to one or more uses already authorized in that district, and it's an appropriate location for such a use. Such approval would not reduce the value of any property within the district, nor otherwise be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood. There will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. And finally, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of that proposed use. So the difference between a special exception and a variance is if you were proposing a use that was not either permitted as of right or allowed by special exception in a district, you would be applying for a variance. There's a different set of criteria the zoning board looks at for granting a variance. Residents might be more familiar with the variance application process if they were proposing an addition or something to their home that required a variance for being located within a setback, but you can also apply it for a variance for a use in a district that's not permitted. So that's kind of a brief summary of it.
Thank you, Matthew. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. I think that's important, that everyone understands that we are restricted in a special exception case to the criteria set forth here. And I, I just want to make sure everyone completely understands what our position as a board is and what our responsibilities to decide are, are on. So I think that's got to be abundantly clear. So I appreciate that, Brian, that you, you know, reemphasizing that. So Eric and, or, or Bob, any comments in general that you'd like to discuss? Anything that-
Bob, I have no comments. I'm ready to go to the questions.
Okay.
Eric Calio, I'm ready for the questions.
Ann Karazinski, I'm ready for the questions.
Okay. And Brian, you ready to?
I'm ready to.
All right. Let's go to the questions on hand. Number one. Is the exception allowed by the ordinance? Yes or no? And I'll just ask in no particular order. Brian?
It is allowed by the ordinance, yes.
Does everyone agree with that?
Bob Mitchell, yes.
Ryan, Eric?
Eric Calio, yes.
And Ann?
Yes.
Okay. Number two.
What's your vote?
Oh, sorry. That's, I have to also vote yes. I would, that is correct. All right, this is a new position for me to be in on this side of it.
You're doing a good job.
Thank you, Brian. All right. And my vote was yes, Beverly.
I have it. Thank you.
All right, number two. Are the below-listed specified conditions present under which the exception may be granted? So A, is the proposed use similar to one or more of the uses already authorized in that district? And it is an, and is it an appropriate location for such use? Bob?
Okay. I am going to look at just the first part of it. Is it similar to one or more uses already authorized? The proponent has mentioned Colonial Village and Haley Heights. You know, similar is a continuum. So I'm going to look at this and ask, is it similar or dissimilar? If it's more dissimilar, I'm going to go no. If it's more similar, I'm going to vote yes. And when I compare this project to Colonial Village and Haley Heights based upon setback density, density of, of the utilization of the lot, I find this project very dissimilar to Colonial Village and Haley Heights. And I have to say, no, it is not similar.
Ann?
Well, thank you, Bob, for summarizing what I had to say so well. I, I also, the, the applicant has mentioned the Haley Park project, which is monstrous, but in the trees and where it's located is, looks fine. And of course, that's all subjective. But when I look at the similarities, I don't find them to be similar in that regard, in terms of the presence of the project. So I will say no.
Ann says no. Brian?
I look at it a little bit differently than they do. I, I think that the that it is similar to what's already authorized, because that's the key word, right? What's already authorized in the district, and it is similar to something that's already authorized in the district. Is it an appropriate location for the use? Well, you know, this comes back to when zoning gets done and goes to the taxpayers, and we don't really pay attention to it because it's not going to affect us. And 15 years down the road, it affects us, and it's too late because we didn't vote on it appropriately when we should have. And so my answer is still the same. The answer is no. But it's only because I think that it is similar to authorized use, but I don't agree, agree that it's an appropriate location.
So Brian, you're saying no?
Right.
All right, that's three votes no.
Adam, Adam needs to vote as well.
Eric?
Oh.
And Eric?
No, because we're going on standard operating procedures, which means well, you're the chairman. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Well, three votes, three votes no on the, on the first of these questions. The quorum or the majority has stated no.
I see. Thank you.
So there's no need to go further.
It, well, historically, Adam, we have had everyone vote. This is Bob Mitchell. I, I believe everyone should vote.
I think so, too. Yeah.
And I think on all the items, just for the record, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Eric?
On this question, I'm going to vote yes. Looking at the material and the information, I feel that this project is similar to the other locations in town. So I, I stand that. My vote is yes on that question.
Okay, thank you, Eric. And my vote, and I apologize for any procedural, you know, blunders on this. We'll get through this, I promise, and we'll do it correctly. So on my vote, as it pertains to it being proposed as a similar use or authored to something else and is an appropriate location, I say from a similar point of view, I'd, I'd have to say I've been swayed in my decision in that there's not a similar, I don't feel there's a similar location. there's not a similar, um, I don't feel there's a similar location, um, or similar use, uh, within this, this area. So I'm going to, when I say no. All right. The second, uh, question, uh, for B is will such approval reduce the value of any property within the district? Or otherwise be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood? I will start off with Eric.
I don't see any evidence of the contrary that it will be obnoxious or reduce property values. So I'll vote no on that based on the fact that I, I, I don't see any issues there.
Uh, this is Bob Mitchell. That's a double negative, Eric. So make sure you know what your vote is.
Can you repeat the question again so I understand?
The, Bob, would you like to, or I can, I continue as well. The, the question is propos- is posed as a, as a double negative. So a vote for no is actually an approval. That makes sense? So you're aware of that, Eric, right? Correct?
So because I voted no, I'm, I'm supporting that question.
Correct.
Okay, that, that, that's what I'm trying to do.
Um, Brian?
Yeah, so.
No to not, and I don't think he's got that right. This is Bob Mitchell. The question is, uh, such approval would not reduce the value. And he's saying no to that statement.
Right. It's 10 o'clock at night, so Eric's forgiven. But I had to read it.
Actually, let me read the criteria says, will such approval reduce the value of any property? That's how it reads.
And I'm saying no, that's, that's how I'm interpreting it.
Document I have here says would not reduce.
Well, that's interesting because that's.
I'm, I'm reading it from the town of Swansea's website. B, such approval would not reduce the value of any property within the district.
You can't read it from the website. It's got to be from the packet of the information that the applicant.
This is the packet.
And that's not say not.
The, the applicant misstated it. We're using the official questions. On page 25 of our packet. The applicant misstated the question. We have the official state of New Hampshire questions, and it always has been a double negative.
Oh, I agree with you.
All right, directly off, let me ask, all right, so directly off of the, the, our, our ordinance site, the exact verbiage. Bob, would you like to reread that? Make sure that the answer is correct, that Eric is.
Sorry, Bob.
I don't have that with me, but I have it from our packet where.
Matthew, are you able to clarify?
Because page 192 of.
Find it here.
You getting 192?
Yeah, it says.
So I, if I may, I, I think, I think what the issue is, um, the town zoning ordinance, uh, so this is item B. The criterion from the zoning ordinance states such approval would not reduce the value of any property within the district nor otherwise be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood. So that is what is stated in the zoning ordinance. If you go to page, uh, 21 of the packet, this is the special exception application form. And it states, will such approval reduce the value of any property within the district or otherwise be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood? So it's, it's a little confusing. The, the way the ordinance is, is worded is different from the way the special exception application form is worded. And, um, typically the zoning board in reviewing the questions for the special exception criteria uses the, the application form, and I believe that's what, um, Adam, you're reading off of.
What I'm reading off of, correct?
Yeah, so it's.
And that's what I'm saying. This is Brian. I absolutely agree with Bob and Anne that that is our ordinance. 100% agree that it is a double negative. That's the way it's written, however. For procedural matters and legally, I think that we gave the applicant a form that is stated in a different fashion and that we have applied by that form because that's what we gave out.
So Eric is right.
Yeah, I can live with that. This is Bob Mitchell. Eric's all set.
So, so, so please, please, for the sake of the record, please read the form, that the, the sentence as you will be voting on it, please.
All right, the official sentence, Beverly, is will such approval reduce the value of any property within the district? Or otherwise be injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood?
Got it.
That's how it's read.
Thank you.
My answer still stands as no.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. All right, um. Brian?
So after all of that, I agree with Bob and Anne. Like I said, I think that, uh, after this is done, Matthew should, uh, probably take a look at those forms and address them appropriately. Uh, the only evidence that we have was given to us by the applicant. We have no counterpoint evidence given to us by the public. So in this particular case, the way it's worded, I see nothing that says that property values will be reduced. So I have to say no with this wording.
Bob?
I have no observations to make about property value. But I am going to say the proposed use and its approval would be offensive to the neighborhood. Offensive defined as causing displeasure and resentment to the people living in that neighborhood. So I'm voting yes on this.
Okay. Anne?
When I look at the project and its, and its location and at the community in which it would reside, I would agree. Well, I will state that I would find it offensive in in that neighborhood, within that context. As far as the property values, I, you know, I cannot speak to that. And as far as injury, no, I can't speak to that either. But as far as the community in the location of where the homes are and the type of homes that they are, and, you know, the display of, of the structure. I would say that that is offensive. So I'll say yes on question B.
Okay, yes. And I would, uh, myself, Adam Mulhern here, uh, with respect to reducing property values within the district, the evidence given, I would say, uh, from the applicant shows that it would not have an effect. And all the testimony I've heard, um, you know, at least in my opinion, seems to back that claim. Um, I haven't heard anything otherwise. Uh, as it relates to being injurious, obnoxious, or offensive to the neighborhood, I think there's been a lot of testimony, uh, to that, to that fact. So from that purpose, I would say yes. It would have, um, an offensive and injurious and obnoxious to the, to the neighborhood. So yes, is my vote. All right, so it is 10:05. We have two more questions to get through here. Can we continue?
Can we continue?
All right, um, the third question, will there be a nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians? Anne?
Well, I of course struggled with that one, and I know in essence of speed, I'll just say that, um, I, I do see the traffic in that area. I'm familiar with, with it. And I'm with the number of people living in that facility and their propensity to drive quite a bit. As an older population, I do believe that there will, there could be a hazard to, to the public, both pedestrians and, and to vehicles. And despite what the DOT says, were they, the traffic study, I'm not sure what, what's entailed therein. But when I look at their data on, on the web, it, it seems rather, rather old and not, um, not up to date with the driving habits of New Hampshire residents. So I, my answer is yes. I, I believe that could present a hazard to the public.
Okay, uh, Bob?
I vote no. I'm, I'm aware of the gravel trucks swerving to avoid pedestrians and automobiles swerving to avoid gravel trucks swerving to avoid pedestrians. But I think that exists and it's unrelated to the facts of this case.
Okay, Eric?
I feel from the testimony, yes, it is a busy road. Um, I've traveled it myself. However, um, with having the study presented at the hearing from the DOT showing that this road could handle this particular project. I don't see any issue. So I'm gonna vote no.
Okay, Brian?
Yeah, I think that, uh, adding that many more people in such an area that's already a very dangerous area. Uh, I've already made testimony of the fact that we don't put sidewalks there even though we should. That yes, there will be a nuisance to the public and, uh, a potential serious hazard to vehicles and/or pedestrians.
Okay. And, uh, as it relates to my, uh, my vote, I would say that based on the testimony put in front of us and the board and the fact that it's a New Hampshire road, that, uh, state road that has, uh, you know, given, um, its stance on this particular road. Um, I'm going to say no. All right, D, will adequate and appropriate facilities be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use? And I will go to Anne first.
Um, well, I, I hope so. I believe that's farther on down, um, down the road in terms of getting FAA approval or having the fire department sign off on a, on a very narrow roadway. So I will say, um, yes, adequate and appropriate facilities should be provided for proper operation.
Okay, and just to be nitpicky, it's, it's, it's would. It's, do you believe they would be based on the testimony that you have and?
Oh, I'm reading it from, from the packet like Brian told me to. So, all right. Yes.
Okay. Um, Bob?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Okay, and Brian?
Yes.
And I would also agree with that. Based on all the testimony here by the applicant, I believe that, um, thorough, thorough preparations for this facility have been made and appropriate, uh, uh, for the operation of the use. So I would say yes as well. Okay. Thank you for everyone for making out here this long here. Sorry, Beverly. So the tally of what we have here, Beverly, on the questions, on question one.
Okay, uh, hold on a second. So on question one, you have, um, this is the one that is, uh, three, no. Uh, and, uh, two, yes.
No.
No and two yes?
Was the exception allowed by the ordinance? And I have.
Right one?
Is the exception allowed by the ordinance? I have five yeses.
Um, okay. Yes, that's correct. Sorry, that was the very first one. I'm sorry, I was reading. This is what happens when it gets late in the day.
I'm sorry, Beverly.
Sorry, apologize.
Yep, the, the question number two, A.
Um, you have three no's and two two yeses.
I have four no's and one yes.
Oh, that's right. You voted no. That's correct. Three votes no and, I'm sorry, say that again.
I have, I have four votes no, one vote yes.
You voted no as well. Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and question two, B?
Okay. One one vote no, one vote yes. Two votes yes. Three votes yes, three yes, two no.
That's correct. I, I have the same, everyone. Um, and then question two, C.
Okay, let's see this. Yes. Two yes. Two no. Two yes and three no.
All right.
Is that what you have?
I do. And then five yeses, I have unanimous.
That's correct.
Fourth question.
That is correct.
So as it stands here, based on our precedent for this, uh, for voting on this, on the second question, a vote of no, uh, for the uh, the quality, I'm sorry, the, the, um, oh, the various A, B, and C, D of the question two, uh, would give a no for the full answer. Is that accurate?
Based on our standard operating procedures as they have been, yes.
So based on that, I have four votes no, one vote yes.
That's inaccurate.
Oh, that, that's not right. Believe the applicant, uh, prevailed on the last two and did not prevail on the first two. This is Bob Mitchell.
That's correct. Because of the wording on B, that turned from a double negative to a single positive, so.
On question A.
Fail on one and two.
Fail on one and two, and on C and D, I have a, uh, a.
Failed.
Forever on one, I'm wanting to, okay, on C and D, okay.
So based on standard operating procedures, the way we've always done it, I'll hereby make a motion that the, uh, application for special exception be denied at this point.
We have a second.
This is Bob Mitchell. I'll second that.
All right, there's been a motion to deny the application and it's been seconded. Uh, to, Beverly, could you please give a vote?
I will. Let me just make a note of this.
And I, uh, just, Ben, quickly. Uh, just, uh, Attorney Courtney, do you have any? Any comment on just on the, the motion?
No, I, I think, I think what I understand is the, you know, two A failed, two B failed, even though we had trouble with the double negatives, then the last two passed. Application fails because it didn't meet the two criteria, two A and two B. Is that, that what everybody, uh, understands?
Right.
Well, that's what I was saying, but, uh, the issue we had was the previous issue during our first phone call about, you know, if there's any one single no by any one single person, then their position on the overall question is an automatic no, and this is our standard operating procedure.
That doesn't, that doesn't really come into, to play here because.
Doesn't come into play here because it didn't fail, it didn't pass anyway.
No.
All right, there's been a motion on the, on the floor to, um, deny the application. It's been seconded.
Yes. Adam Mulhern?
Yes.
Bob Mitchell?
Yes.
Eric Calio?
No.
Brian Rutgers? Brian Rutgers?
Yes.
I'm sorry, say again?
Yes.
Anne Karazinski?
Yes.
You have one, two, three, four in favor and one opposed. Motion passes four to one.
Well, I want to appreciate everyone's time on, on the meeting. Everyone did stellar work trying to get everyone, all the communication that was possible through the Zoom meeting features that we had available and the toolset available to us. And so everyone did a good job on that respect. So I apologize. I'm sorry to the applicant. Your, your application was denied.
All right. So at what point do we ask for a rehearing?
Matthew? Or actually, I guess our attorney?
Well, that's your 30 days follow rehearing. It's in the statute.
Right, Matthew?
That is correct. Thank you, Attorney Courtney.
All right, so the motion on the floor has passed. Does anyone have a motion or any other questions, anything they'd like, or they would like to make a motion to close the meeting?
Make a motion, we end the meeting and good night.
I will second Mr. Rogers' motion.
All right, motion on the floor is to conclude the meeting. And it's been seconded. Is there a roll call?
Motion to adjourn. Mulhern?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Eric Calio?
Yes.
Brian Rutgers?
Yes.
Anne Karazinski?
Yes.
Adjourned at 10:17.
All right. Thank you very much, Beverly, for sticking through.
Thank you, Adam. Well.
All right, take care. Good night.
Good night.